Good evening. I want to call to order the September 9, 2013, meeting of the Goffstown Board of Selectmen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item of business on the agenda is the acceptance and correction of the minutes of the August 26, 2013 minutes.
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. Any corrections to be offered? Done. Up this side of the table. Any corrections to the minutes?
I didn't see any that needed to be...
Okay. No further comments on the minutes. All those in favor who accept the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And extensions, ones.
Two.
That's right. Yeah, so motion carries three, zero, two. Thank you. A couple of announcements this evening. First is a letter that was addressed to Evelyn Redman, our town accountant. It's a commendation relative to the chart of accounts developed for the Munis. It reads, "Dear Evelyn, the purpose of this letter is commend you, commend your efforts during the development of the town's chart of accounts during Phase One implementation of the Munis financial software. As a town accountant, your job responsibilities include day-to-day maintenance of the town financial records and a general accounting system, not necessarily the design of a chart of accounts during software implementation. The development of the chart of accounts and subsequent load into Munis software is a major milestone of this implementation. It is the foundation and framework for everything that follows. At an early stage of implementation, you took ownership of the chart of accounts even though you were never tasked with this responsibility. You solicited feedback from departments to understand their specific reporting needs, modified the chart to achieve consistency for expense-revenue codes townwide, and toiled through error logs to ensure historical data will be converted and brought forward into the Munis software. Your expertise with the current chart of accounts and general accounting practices are the reason the town has achieved this implementation milestone. I would like to commend you on a job well done. Good work." It's signed by Derek Horner, Assistant Town Administrator. Thank you very much, Evelyn. That's a very nice letter from Derek.
Absolutely. It's a lot of work.
It was a lot of work and something that... She went above and beyond to do, so many thanks go out to Evelyn. Secondly, I have a press release. The Goffstown Police Department Annual Open House will be held Saturday, September 14, 2013, from 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. There will be plenty of free parking, free food, live entertainment, and fun and games for all ages. There will also be demonstrations of the police K-9, as well as tours of our police department, and police vehicles will be on display. We are excited to have the New Hampshire State Police DUI simulator on display as well. There will be representatives from Service Link, Crispin's House, MADD, Mothers Against Drunk Driving, the Red Cross, and NEK-9, I'm not sure what that acronym stands for, on hand. I'm assuming that's something to do with the K-9 patrols. In addition, there will be materials for families to take home in reference to our medical, mental health registration program. We're asking Goffstown residents to please come and join us and see what the Goffstown Police Department has to offer our community. If you have any questions, please call Communications Supervisor Michelle Proventure at 497-4858. Chief, could you correct me on NEK-9?
New England K-9.
New England K-9, so it's relative to K-9. Okay, thank you. Are there any other announcements from members of the board? Would you like to enter into the record? We're a little early for public comments, so I'd like to move down into the Town Administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your weekly meeting schedule is in your packets. Are all those meetings covered by you?
Got those all covered. Sir Commissioner, I've got that one covered. Highway Safety Planning Board, historic district. All set on all those. Thank you.
Thank you. Consensus folder tonight, you have manifest for September 3 and September 9. General Fund AP warrant on September 3 was $2,237,141.8, and on September 9, $263,964.32. The General Fund payroll withholding, $156,075.16, and $147,099.78. Cable revolving fund AP, $865.28, and on September 9, $1,923.21. Cable revolving fund payroll withholding, 9/3 was $1,0251.48, and on 9/9, $1,162.66. Special Detail Revolving Fund AP, $681.7599, none. Special Detail Fund payroll on September 3 was $133.06, and 9/9 was $676.08. And then distribution of the 2010 LGC surplus, $30,049.69 on September 3. You also have an employee status report for merit increase event permits. WZID Block Party, September 10, Police Open House, 9/14, Annual Crop Walk, 9/29, Goffstown Main Street, Pumpkin Way Off and Regatta, 10/19, 10/20, Snowmobile and Swap Meet, 10/26, and fundraiser car wash on 9/21. And finally, you have the MS-1 valuation report. Motion needed.
Thank you. Have a motion to accept the consensus folder?
Second.
And a second by Ellen. Is there any discussion on the consensus folder? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries five, zero, zero.
Now that there's chapter law that it just takes majority to sign off on the manifest, you won't be seeing all those numbers each week. You'll see them on the individual manifest that you sign. But it doesn't have to be duly noted in the meeting anymore or part of the minutes. Correspondence. You have a 4C. You have a response from NHHFA. Did that answer the board's questions?
Anybody have a chance to read that letter? I did it. It's clear on its face unless somebody asks questions or...
I got, I got part of the answer, I guess, but on the very last page, "While I hope this fully answers the questions of the Board of Selectmen, I encourage the Board of Selectmen to seek advice of legal counsel, as this letter is not to be construed as legal advice." I mean, it still doesn't give us any clear answers. I mean, it starts to paint a picture, but it's not... I guess the question I want to get answered is if we drop this tomorrow, what are our, what are our problems? What are we going to get stuck with?
Am I reading into that, whether or not you think we should seek legal advice, our own legal advice?
I want to seek legal advice. That's my, that's my opinion, and, I mean, I want to, I want to prepare ourselves here for what's coming down the road. Are we, are we all on this together, or are we not on this together?
Other thoughts? Mark suggested we seek legal advice based upon the letter we received from...
This letter is only if we...
That's right.
Drop the whole thing.
Right.
Just let it die and...
It's one of our options.
Just don't even need any advice.
You probably wouldn't get the legal opinion in a timely manner.
Right, yeah.
That's my only fear.
Timely manner, meaning?
Meaning the process will be done by the time you probably get a legal opinion.
Planning Board meetings, it's Thursday.
Right. But that's not on the code. That's just on the plan.
Right.
But I think there are additional questions. This, this raises questions as to, I mean, they're not really sure. One of the things we ask is if the Planning Board, who we really don't control, we don't, they're an elected body, if they choose to not go forward with codes, what are the ramifications? And I don't think they really answered those questions. They gave some possibilities.
Yeah, they gave, exactly. On the first page, the possibilities of some of the ramifications that could happen if, if it is dropped.
I think the only unknown is when they use the cover of HUD, we don't know what HUD would do. So maybe a second letter needs to go out to HUD.
I would, I would highly encourage that. Whether we could get it back in time is the question, I guess, to be answered. I, I mean, I like, I like the idea, I mean, let it just, let it die and die on its own and let it go by the wayside, but what happens if it doesn't die? And what happens if it does get passed? Where do we go next?
Don't we have the option ourselves to try and recommend that it does?
We, we do, Ellen, but, I mean, it, it's going to go all the way to the voting. I mean, you know, and I both know, some strange things have happened on town elections, and I, I mean, I just, I just want to be ready for it. That's all.
Well, it'll go on the ballot if the Planning Board recommends it.
Correct.
If the Planning Board puts it on the ballot.
Yeah.
So what is your fear if it, if it does go through that process?
What hap, let's say, let's say it does go through the process all the way. It makes it all the way to the, to the, to the voting, to the voters of the town, and the voters of the town pass it.
Then it's one of the democratic processes.
The zoning ordinance.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, we'll just, we'll let it take its path. We'll see what happens. We'll just...
I think all indications of the path it's headed is out the door, but, I mean, I...
Yeah, but...
But I'm looking at, at kind of the other way. If, what are the implications if the Planning Board decides they don't want to go with an ordinance? Are, are there implications? They don't answer that here. They say maybe.
Well, they say they understand that we don't control the Planning Board. This board doesn't control the Planning Board on this issue. The Planning Board is an elected board making its own decisions.
Correct. But they also go on to say that regardless of what he thinks, HUD may think differently.
So let's send a letter to HUD.
Well, on page two...
No.
Let me just look that back. On page two, the second paragraph up, it says, "The Board of Selectmen determines that the committee has completed its work by making its report to the Planning Board and believes that the town has substantially met the goals of the project. We will deem the town to have met its obligations under the grant agreement."
And, Mr. Chair, I can tell you, last week, when the Plan Penardville Committee met here, they unanimously approved it to go on to the next step.
Which is presentation to the Planning Board.
Correct.
If I may, Mr. Chair, if you look at the last paragraph, though, it says, "With either scenario you have proposed, there's an important underlying consideration. The U.S. Department of Housing and Irving Development is the source of funds for the CPG grant. As structured, you know, continues and says C-Section 7, as far as the conditions of the cooperative agreement. While New Hampshire Housing may undertake certain actions as described in my response, even if New Hampshire Housing deems the town's obligation to be completed, a reviewing HUD auditor may not agree and may demand repayment."
So we got our foot on the ban trap, or just...
Exa, I mean, I don't...
I think you need to write to HUD.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And pose the same questions to them and see what their response is.
And, and he goes on to say, "We believe the only way for the town to be fully relieved of such a potential obligation for repayment is for the town to repay the $39,500 grant money that's already been expended."
Right, but what everybody's missing, there are two questions that were asked. Number one about dissolving the plan.
Correct.
And no complaints, ordinance submitted to the Planning Board. Number two, the committee does it work, it goes, does its work, it goes forth to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board decides not to put it on the ballot. Those are the, those are what these responses are.
Yep.
Okay? But the third thing that's in here, okay, that solves the entire problem, is if the plan goes forward, goes to the Planning Board, the Planning Board puts it on the ballot and it fails.
Yep. And you're saying if it fails.
It could go on, they would not recommend it by the Planning Board.
Correct.
It's not to say that we can't publicly propose it either, you know?
Sue, can we just take the email that you sent on August 20 to New Hampshire Housing and send it off to HUD and ask for their response to the same questions?
Give them the same, this response.
Yep, so what are your...
Do you concur?
Yep.
We do a bye-bye NHHFAs.
Thank you, Sue.
Letter?
And I would hope they get, should be able to get to that quickly, I would hope.
Yep.
Time is of importance here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That satisfy?
Yeah.
The board members' concerns?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, it is passed in 6:10 for public comment, so open up for public comment. Anybody in the public who'd like to comment, come on forward, state your name, and share your thoughts with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fine committee members. I am Representative John Burt. I am a representative in Goffstown, as you know. Just to touch base very quickly on what you just said, there were two members in the ad hoc committee. It was not unanimous. There was two that opposed this, so I wanted to make that sure. I personally spoke with Mr. HUD, Carson, out on the back steps for probably 25 minutes the last time he was here. He was pretty disgusted with the way this was going down. I asked him personally if what would happen, and he said, "You know what? I'm dealing in the hundreds of millions. Do you think we really care about Goffstown and $50,000? No." That was his answer. So I'm assuming, hopefully, you'll get the same response that the New Hampshire finance. The reason I am here, I sent everybody an email, and I just want to personally invite all five of you to the meeting tomorrow that I am hosting at the Bartlett Elementary School. I will have, you know, five seats reserved for you. I hope you can make it. It's, to me, it's extremely important that you see the people that are upset about this and that do not want this to go forward. My next comment would be on the CIP. From what I'm understanding, watching the video and stuff, which, thank you to GTV, I'm glad they're here, $140,000 is going to be asked of you to further Plan Penardville. From what I'm hearing...
Oh, the master plan?
Yes.
This is a, master plan is done regardless of Plan Penardville every so many years.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
Okay, then I stand corrected, because I was going to say if it's linked to this, you know, save our money and wait. If it's not, then, you know, I guess you probably have to spend it. But there was many comments on the CIP meeting, if you watch it on GTV. You know, I'll put my tinfoil hat on, as they said in the meeting, and talk about these grants. You know, I know the fire station is going to be requesting a ton of grants, you know, to do their expansions and their, you know, renovations and stuff that they want. From what I was told, because I wasn't here, but all of the fire stations, pretty much that we have, especially the two big ones, were all built with donations, and it was all built by us. We can do that again. I mean, I know over in Proctor, Vermont, there's a marble fire station. The thing is pretty impressive when you look at it. Hundred percent marble. Didn't cost the taxpayers a dime. We can do that here. You know, we don't have to go for these grants all the time. Every grant has a string. You know, I really hope that we can get away from these grants, or at least minimize them. In the last, and I do appreciate your allowing me to take this time, is I did watch the Selectmen's meeting last week, and I was kind of disturbed and very upset about, you know, again, you know, that you're calling the people that oppose Plan Penardville negativity, and, you know, I think a couple people even said Belly Acres, and there were some other names thrown in. You know, I think as an American citizen, I think we're supposed to challenge our government, and I encourage everybody to come here and speak and to challenge what you guys are doing, because it's our money. And for people to say, "Well, it's only 40 people, or 400 people signed the petition, or 40 people are grumbling." You know, there's 4,000 people in Penardville. Well, I mean, if it really means that much to you, I promise, I will get 2,000 of them to come here. And would that be the number that would go, "Oh, my God. I guess the people are serious, but to dismiss us?" You know, I, I would hope that it will stop, you know, especially being elected officials. You know, I am a representative. Last Saturday, I had a big mail-in go-out. A lot of people helped me pay for it, because, you know, being a state rep, they only pay me $100 a year, so money's a little tight. I got a gentleman that called me. Forty-three minutes, he reamed me out. How dare I send him this piece of paper in his mailbox, and how dare I do this and this? And, you know, I got my facts wrong, so I kept talking to him for 43 minutes. At the end of the conversation, I said, "I'm sorry that we disagree, but my facts are right." And to come find out, he never even read the, the plan or the grant, but I still talked to him. When I hung up to him, he called back in 10 minutes. I looked at the caller ID, and there his name was again. I go, "Oh, God." Well, I'm a state rep, so I'm going to pick up that phone. So I picked it up. You know the first words out of his mouth? He said, "Mr. Burt?" And I said, "John's all right?" He said, "John, thank you." I am sorry. His wife spoke to him. They have a child, and she says, "Do you want to bring your child up like this?" And she also said, "For a person to sit on that phone for 43 minutes and take that abuse..." And I never called them names. That is what elected officials are supposed to do. This gentleman was upset, just like the people that come in here. They're upset because of this plan. They're seeing streets and garages missing, and streets added, and they're confused. And, yeah, do they say some stuff that isn't right? Yeah, because it's a huge thing. But I just ask you, and I ask you to please relay to your other boards that we have an ethics paper here, and I think it addresses this. You know, and for the CIP gentleman, there was a couple of them that said, "Oh, they'll just put their tinfoil hats on." You know, for them to say that, you know, it's just ridiculous to me. I would never do that with an opposition that opposes what I believe in. I'll talk to them, and I'll say, "I'm sorry that we disagree." I want to thank you again for your time, and I hope you can make it tomorrow. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What time is the meeting?
Next one goes to the slutter. I'm glad you were on. The last time I appeared before you, gentlemen, I don't know if any of you remember me. It was after the Mother's Day flood. We were faced with national news, media attention. Why did I get involved? Been involved with a bunch of, a bunch of publicity promotion and marketing projects of inconsequential disappointment in the game, but suffice to say that I'm not without, you know, marketing, public relations, and all that. Why am I coming here tonight? Number one, 50,000 guys, you know, like, when we had the floods, everybody was like, gee, no one can stay in mobile homes. Remember all that? The town ordinance? And you guys saw, the, you guys being the selectmen, saw the wisdom, granted, if you will, a variance, I don't know what y'all call it, but said, "Okay, poor people, let them alone. They got nowhere to go. Let them be. Cool." Now, 50 grand for a grant? Gee, you know, it seems to me, I recollect when I was in college and got a Pell Grant, it was freebie. I spent it on a boat. And we drank a lot of beer that night. But it was a grant. There was no strings attached. Didn't have to do anything. Now, there's strings attached. All I'm going to say is I did some homework, and I'm not asking, I'm begging, please, as important as it was to dispel the ordinance, come to the meeting tomorrow. What will be revealed is nothing short of eye-opening akin to having you all go to Roswell and see the aliens in the spacecraft. It's that important. I passed a website on to Mr. Campasano and to Ms. Destico today. Check that website out. They entered into the agreement with the devil. They're willing to regret it. To the point of counties are being withheld federal monies for flood relief because they will not roll the dice with HUD. No say on that. Please, please, I'm begging you. Come to the meeting tomorrow. I'm going to tape it with the help of Goffstown Television. It's, you guys are the mayors. It's, it's torn the town apart. I sat and kept my fat lips shut for years, except now. It's that much. Now, turning to a couple other things that are real important. Guess you're on the way to the North Fair Beans. How come as mayors, forget the expression, but I don't know what else to call you guys, mayors, and Mr. Adams, before you were on the board, I'd read Goffstown paper religiously. You always had a voice in the people. You always were on controversy. We need your help. I'm, you guys are going to be calling me the good lord, because in a little while, I'm going to be able to walk across the water on the nasty lake. It's getting that bad. Manchester gave us Naga, but this is it. Hello? Our property is going to be worth, ask, well, you know, Steve Fornier, ask Steve. He's my neighbor. I can look over and have him know where I live. I'm across from the Allards. It's going to be North Fair Beans. Manchester uses it. And if any of you want to come to my vote, I can take Kennedy out. I'll buy the bean, take it for a ride with Tressel. You're going to see a horror show down there. Gee, when we were all growing up, wasn't a fence meant, I still, Chief Sullivan agreed, stay out, not cross, jump, impale? Gee, that's Manchester. Turn around and police the mat. The North Fair? How do you think it's going to end? Hello? Second thing, the trail, the bridge. You guys know that Manchester's the bane in the trail because of that feeding? We don't have a trail, guys. The trail out here, living down the blondes, that's a trail. We don't have a trail. We got the second half, like the Harry Potter story, the second half of Interstate 93. The chief's crying about men pulling out. What's he going to do in these tests with the, with the tests? Like, we're going to Marine Corps, which I'm a veteran of, probably. I love my town, my country. But guys, come on. You think the chief's going to have people to put out there, to tell them, "Alone, going, don't do this, don't do that"? Or somebody's going to go, "Hey, Mary, gee, isn't it a nice day? Wild for you to skate Goffstown." Or, gee, "Hey, Johnny, look at the pretty water down there. Oh, they won't mind. Let's go and access down here and go to the water." Gee, we're from Dunbarton. We're from Manchester, but this is Goffstown. Oh, hell. It's not rocket science. At 50 grand on a grant? Gee, I think Mr. Campasano's still in the Manchester Fire Department, and I'm sure the chief could think of about 15,000 reasons that people that put a badge on it, protect us, could spend 50 grand for them to grant that. Mr. Evans, you, you were smart there. You could have called somebody and go, "Hey, Johnny, over in East Overhill. Did you guys do this? Oh, you did? Oh, cool. Hey, Billy, did you guys get in a deep, deep, you-know-what that smells? Oh, you did? How'd you get out of it?" I heard somebody there might say, "Let's get legal counsel." Gee, you think? Number one. Number two, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know if it's messaging Mrs. Destico. I know she lied. The town secretary and that. Doesn't the town have a war on staff? Hello? It's not rocket science. They put the apartments up in the curb. Did anyone ever go down and ask the chief if really the trail that, what the, the, the traffic impact with that would be? You ever been down there? You go around that first curve, there's trees like this. You can't see nothing. Gee, call Department of Public Works. Excuse me, sir, ma'am. Could you please cut those trees down to save someone's life? It's not rocket science. So you wonder why people like me, you develop a mouth and go, "Jeez, are you guys really for real?" Or when you answer a question like, "Well, we don't know if we'll be at the meeting or not." It's your job to do. This stuff is tearing the town apart. So, you know, if I could run, I would, but I'd probably get told to shut my mouth. But the thing is, you've got to listen to people. You save the people. The people don't save you. Kennedy said it. Don't ask what the hell you can do for your country, or your country can do for you. Ask me what you can do for your country. Don't ask what the town can do for you. What can you do for the town? When people say no, it's sort of like drugs. No means no. And I'll, I'll leave you with this. It's, it's a little, a little thing I wrote today that is going to be alert to the editor. Why is this plan like a good drug? It's, it's a little, a little thing I wrote today that is gonna be alert to the editor. Why is this plan like a good drug? My fellow townspeople, we have a distinguished time bestowed upon us, and that is raising donations in order to erect a memorial and a hall of fame honoring our government leaders that so diligently led us through the dark hours. The problem is, where do they have this hall of fame? You know, we can't locate it next, next to the Washington Monument, 'cause good old George never did tell a lie. You know, we can't deny Bill Clinton because he couldn't tell the difference. And we sure can't go to Washington, 'cause them people sometimes have a little bit of difference, structure the truth from, from fiction. We all think perhaps sometimes, near a small town, maybe it will remind us of Christopher Columbus, because the lander, you know, Columbus didn't really know where he was going. He didn't really have a plan, but he sold the government and he borrowed money to do it. He returned, not knowing where he'd been, but he did it all on government borrowed money. Centuries ago, Moses told the children of Israel, launch your candles, make your shovels, and trust me, I'm gonna lead you to the promised land. Now, we're hearing through Mr. Lemay, some of his comments about the fine print, some of the attachments. Now we're hearing that it seems that some of those stupid leaders wants to lay down our shovels, raise up the taxes on camels, and mortgage the promised land. So if anyone's got any money left after that, maybe a tribute should be erected and donated. After all, isn't this spending, it's hitting a gender just kinda like a drug? It invokes a good feeling while it's giving a false sense of security. That is, until the euphoria wears off, you come back to reality and ask yourself, what the H E double hockey sticks just happened? Before it's too late, guys, get involved, and in this instance, this HUD money? If it's not a freebie with no strings attached, be like a drug. Just say no. Ask the chief or the fire, the fire chief, we have fifty thousand to help save somebody's life. Have a nice day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Someone else would like to be heard? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Barbara Dexter, and I have to be one of the people that dealt with HUD after the flood. And I'm gonna tell each and every one of you that anything you get from the federal government, HUD, is going to come with a string. It is going to come with a price tag, it is going to come with a string, and you have to be, the people in town have to be willing to accept that. Not just you as a board, but the future generations have to be able to accept what comes with those strings. I sent back HUD money. Because I will not have strings attached to my children and my home. I sent back federal money. Because I will not allow them to own my property and tell me what I can and cannot do. Okay? Because they do not always do their projects right. They do not always have the well-being of the community invested. They have a big picture. The big picture is not Goffstown. The big picture is the big picture. Um, I'm actually here tonight for my own self because I'm here to talk about the money that you all received from the federal government, from FEMA after the flood, to fix your roads. That all came with strings. I'm at, I'm on Center Street. My home is continually being flooded by poor engineering of your drains. All the government money that you got after that flood, after my house, was totaled. Not one dime came out of the taxpayer of Goffstown, not a dime for a loaf of bread, not a knock on the door from a selectman saying, I'm sorry, or anything. And we have been rebuilding on our own ever since. We have never fully regained it. Every year, your drains are totaling more of our property, doing more damage, taking out our driveways. You are draining all of Center Street onto my property. You have no regards for my property or the fact that I'm there. I have called multiple times, I left a letter for Mr., uh, um, Quorum. I emailed it, a copy of it, I think I sent to Mr. Lemay. Uh, I put in a work request this time. Um, we are expecting that you are going to pay your bill. That you are gonna fix the damages that you have created, because that is the right thing to do. That you are going to fix your, your road, because that road does not just, that road is not just in front of my home. It is not just the access to my home, it is also health and safety. You are putting health and safety at risk, and you continue to do it knowing that that drainage is no good. That is the access, that is Goffstown Back Road, going from Main Street all the way to Manchester. The ambulances, the fire departments, they need access to that road. They need to get people to hospitals. People need to be able to get to Mountain View in case of an emergency, because that's a shelter. You have not taken seriously the fact that these are your emergency routes. And this is one of your emergency routes. There is not proper drainage and engineering. The drains were changed when they redid the road. It needs to be fixed. You need to take your, you need to fix the damages you've created on our property, because that's our egress. We cannot get in and out of our property, we cannot, we cannot pump our septic tanks, because trucks can no longer get into our yard. Our driveway's gone. This is not the first time you've taken out our yard. Our home, our yard, the water is flowing across Center Street, we have pitches of waterfalls. That is not, that is not proper drainage. The waterfalls are not even reaching the drain. So the drains aren't in the right places. The waterfalls are running down the road, and everything is pitched into my driveway. My driveway is going down into my house. I will not accept any further damages from the town of Goffstown. It's time for you to step up, look at your, look at what you've done, fix the problem, come up with solutions, fix the driveway. I have two children with disabilities and a husband that's disabled. Those trucks need to be accessible to pump septic tanks. They need to be able to get in there to get heating stuff to those children, so that they can reside in their home. If these needs are not met, that becomes a public safety issue for my family. And my family should not be put through it again, because not one taxpayer or anybody in the town of Goffstown has paid for one dime of repairs of the damages they've done. This time, you need to fix your problem. You need to stop damaging the private property. You need to find out how you're gonna solve your problem. Do not make your problem my problem. I am not going down for eighty thousand dollars again. I have had two, two shoulder surgeries and a back surgery. I wanna see you people come down with the shovel, I wanna see you people clean up the mess. Your water can cause black mold, which can kill my kids, because they have asthma, they have breathing problems, and they have breathing machines. Those ambulances have been very good at showing up at my door. The fire department has been wonderful, the police department has been wonderful. What's your problem with Public Works? Who's signing those engineering permits? Because somebody that's signing those engineering permits, you are liable for their signature. You are stating that that engineer, that you trust that engineer's work. Well, go look at Center Street, because you shouldn't be trusting that work. You should be questioning it. When you have a problem, you should stand up to the plate and you should clean it up. You should not sit there and tell taxpayers that you're not gonna deal with it. Not you per se, but the Public Works Department, that you are not gonna go on private property, or you are not gonna do this. If you destroy private property, it should be your obligation to repair it. It should be your right, it should be the right of the homeowner not to have to live like that, be, and suffer those losses. You should not be hurting the people of Goffstown. This whole board is set here so that we can come forward and speak to you, so that you can take care of these people. These people are being paid out of our salary. You, you know, it's all our money. You people are holding our money, and you're saying to these people, I trust you. Well, if they've made big mistakes, you better start questioning the trust. I don't care how many conventions you send them to, how big of an engineering school they look like they came from. If they've made a mistake, be big enough to fix it. But do not put them up on a pedestal, because they're going to fall very, very, very far. And you people are going to be the ones that look like fools and monkeys. Because it's, there's pictures of all of this. Pictures say a thousand words. And be careful of your grants, because they will come with a string.
Just use the moment, if you bear with me. That's the first I've heard of your situation, so I appreciate you coming forward and sharing, so we have the opportunity to look into it. You said you put in a work request for DPW, do you remember when you submitted that work request?
Do you have the copy of the date?
I don't have the copy of the date.
Recently?
Yeah, I was...
I haven't got a response.
Yeah, day after, day after the storm.
I haven't got a response. Yeah, Carl hasn't responded.
Okay, well, like I said, first I've heard of it.
Carl won't respond.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention, we'll, we'll follow up on it for you.
Because Carl ignores things. It's not his property being damaged.
And I don't want, I don't wanna hear disparaging remarks about people, but I appreciate you coming forward.
I'm going to say, as a taxpayer, I have every right to speak the truth. The Mother's Day flood was how many years ago? And this is how many years later? If he respected somebody, then you people would've fixed it.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to come forward and comment? This would be your opportunity. Okay, thank you very much, we're gonna get back to the agenda. Uh, let's see, where did we leave off?
D.
D. This was a sale of tax-dated properties.
Okay.
On January twenty-first, the board authorized the tax dating of three properties, two of which were abandoned, uh, Two Water Road, Two Shore Drive, and One Mill Street. The tax dating process has concluded, and the previous owners and lien holders were given the required ninety days to purchase property, but none have expressed any interest. The board indicated at that time that, one, uh, first, Two Water Road, which is a collapsed house, uh, on the, uh, lake, should only be offered for sale by saleboat to the Butters, with the conditions that the house be removed, the lot restored, and the lot merged with the Butters' lot, as it is not a rebuildable lot. If we're gonna go full with that, then I think we need to, um, give them a timeframe to do that. And before I advertise this, I guess I need to know what timeframe would, do you think would be reasonable at this point? But probably wouldn't be done till spring, I would imagine.
When is the, when is the time for the, uh, opening of the bids?
We haven't put it out yet, because I want to write all these specifications in the ad.
I understand, but what's the timeframe between...
Probably a month from now, I would guess, they'd be opened.
So, okay.
Because we want to give enough time.
We're looking around October tenth.
Right.
On Columbus Day.
Yeah.
Question.
Yes.
Stop process. On the, the homes that would be going out, or the property that would be going out for sealed, um, sale to the Butters, with the conditions that they would remove the house, how does that process work? We would have to transfer title to them first, before they could remove anything?
They would have to bid on it, and then bid those conditions. One, that the, um, house be removed, two, that follow best practices to close up any wells or septic systems that may exist.
So someone accepts that, we accept their proposal?
Right.
We would have to transfer title?
Yes.
And then what recourse do we have if they don't follow through on the removal of the home and all of the conditions?
That's, that's, that's a twenty thousand dollar question.
Exactly. So the other option is that you could, we could do this. We could follow best practices, close up any well or septic system, and remove, um, the demolished house. And then add that to our cost and put it out to bid that way. That's another way you can do it.
If you're gonna do that, you probably should hire it up, just somebody private and let them do it.
Oh, yes, that's definitely what we do. We don't have the equipment to get down in there.
No. Should be doing either.
And then you...
Personally, I'm more comfortable with that approach than to expect some other third party to come in and take it down.
It would be safer, then you won't have any enforcement issues afterwards if you do that.
Only difficulty with that, we might wind up spending more money than we receive for the property.
You probably will.
Because...
You probably will. The, um...
Is there any way to have them pay for the removal prior to transfer of title?
Sorry? You know, you, you hold on to books.
Have them do the work on your property, liability, we'd have to check with our insurance company, because they would be working on our property, and what if...
Couldn't we, couldn't we hire the third party to come in and do the demolition, but they would just reimburse the town?
Successful bidder?
Mm-hmm. So we would still, it would still be our property, we would still hire someone to go in and do all that work, but the successful bidder would be reimbursing us prior to the transfer of the title?
Has there been any environmental assessments done on the property, determine if there's any waste?
Um, yeah, DES went down, the fire chief went down, um, and from what they can see, there was nothing. Because he had, the prior owner had removed the oil tanks and was excavating around, and that's when it collapsed.
So, could we do a controlled burn down there?
Training?
Yeah.
Uh, there's no training guide, because it's already collapsed.
Just a pile of rubble.
Yeah. Yeah, it's in a big hole.
Yeah.
And also it's very sensitive, because it's near the lake. I think we had gotten a bid a while ago, because this has been ongoing for some time, and it was about ten thousand dollars, too. Take that away.
What if we were to put it out to bid, to sell it, if that's what's gonna happen with it? Successful bidder wins the property. Here you go, we still hold the title. You have to do all of these things before we're gonna hand you the title, regardless what happens. If you want it, that's what's gonna happen, and we, we hold the gun, we hold all the bullets. So, I mean, he gets no title free and clear until it's such a time that we accept it and say, yeah, it's fine.
It's an acceptable condition for us to do.
Right? I mean, we don't, we can wash ourselves of all the liability. It's your, it's your job.
But that, if you're holding the title, then he's working on your property, and suppose he just decides to do it himself?
I wouldn't give him that option. My, my concern is that our, the town got involved with this because of the dilapidated building, and if we transfer title, and now we're in an enforcement situation, we may still have this situation, but we just...
Exactly.
Right, exactly.
Have turned the property over to someone else.
I agree, I think we need to take care of it before we sell it, and build in that cost into your minimum bid.
Yep.
Yeah, I agree.
If you don't get that minimum bid, then we can retain the property.
You could.
But the problem that you run into is if you retain, every year you retain the property. That's that much less tax that you would've received had you given it for less than your minimum bid.
Mm-hmm.
Hold the property for ten years and you're losing five hundred dollars a year in ten years, how much money is that?
That particular property right now, what's owed to the town is ten thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars. And certain RSA allows you to add fifteen percent to the assessment, to recoup, uh, which is another five thousand.
Do we have any idea what it's gonna cost to clean it, is it gonna cost us ten thousand, five thousand?
I'd have to get an updated estimate on that.
Did we have one at one?
At one point we did, it was about ten thousand.
How big, how square footage, footprint is it?
Well, it's a non, it's a non-buildable lot, right?
Right, it is a non-buildable lot.
Yeah, so it's small, we're talking about a small lot.
You're talking to very much, you're talking to five thousand dollars. If I was, if I was gonna do something like that myself, five thousand dollars, I'd be stealing to take it down and get rid of it. It's not that big a deal.
It's, the lot's tricky, because it's like right on the lake.
Yeah, I know, but still, you know, just pull up, throw it in the dumpster.
On one side.
See you later, bye.
Are there permits required?
Oh, yeah.
Under the shoreline protection?
Probably.
Do that? To clean it up?
I shouldn't think so, just clean it up. You're not building.
Wouldn't need a permit, they may ask you for a restoration plan that would specify, you know, controlling erosion, making sure it's...
Right, yeah. Certain types of insurance.
But certainly they would work with anybody on that.
Yeah.
Certainly DES recognizes that, it's not a good situation.
So I'm sensing the board would rather clean it up and try, attempt to get money back on it, to make sure it's done, and done right.
Yeah, your question, and one of your questions is how much time should we allow them?
Well, if we're gonna have them do it, we would build in a timeframe, but if we're gonna do it, we'll clean it up before we put it out to bid. No?
I'm kind of in the middle.
Yeah, I know.
Find out what the cost is for cleanup, go out to bid, and then we have an idea of what the minimum bid needs to be.
And you're in the same situation.
So when bidders bid on it, they know what they're getting into.
With the collapsed house.
Just, uh, remember one thing. We have a target date of April first, because where the property is on April first is gonna determine the year. So if we're gonna see about cleaning up the property, we're gonna wanna get that property cleaned up this season.
Yeah.
So that we can get it on, because even if we transfer a title in December, the main thing is, is the new owner owns it by April first, it's taxable. If we own it April first, we lose the entire year.
Well, if we do the cleanup, we could get that done this year.
Well, I'm just saying, I think the goal...
It's time to do that, if you wanna do that.
If we're gonna do that, the goal would be to get, as soon as we possibly can, to get this thing transferred. The sooner the better.
Question. Yes.
How long would it be put out to bid? For the Butters?
For about a month, about, well, two to three weeks, but, you know, getting it in the paper, and then, I'd say it's a one-month process.
So would there be time to get an updated estimate on the cleanup costs? Include that in the minimum bid, go out to bid to the Butters, and get a feel for...
The interest?
The interest, and if we get...
Before you commit?
And if we get a bid, then we know we can commit.
Okay.
I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that.
Yeah, and the cost of it. Yeah, and the cost of-
Yeah, I think that's the way to go.
Okay.
It's safer for everybody. I think you'll find you'll, you'll have people taking, doing the job, it's not-
Yeah, I'd rather get it on a tax roll for April first.
Okay. One Mill Street, that's just vacant land. Um, and again, it's not a buildable lot, so it should be offered by seal bid to the Butters, and winning the Butters would merge it with their lot.
Okay, so there's no structures there?
Yeah. No structures in.
Where's this, that, that park in there, that little gravel?
It's at the end of, what's the street that runs this way? Cottage, is that cottage that runs?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, Cottage, okay, it's at the end of Cottage.
Okay.
On the river.
Yeah.
Uh, and the third one is Two Shore Drive, and that's a large lot with a structure on it. Uh, the people have left, and the board felt that it should be put out for a seal bid to the public.
That's one we ought to tear down, too.
I, I think you can leave that for the owners to do, if they wanted to have. I would, I would guess that that's probably what any prospective buyer would do.
Yeah, let's not get into destruction business, let somebody else do that, get rid of it, let it go.
Right, and it's not collapsed, or?
No, no. There's no save, public safety issue there. The other one had a definite public safety issue.
Oh, okay, so that's the difference, yeah.
Yeah. Um, but, there's always a question, if you want to put it out for minimum bids on these last two. Let me give you an idea of what that would be. Mill Street would be one thousand four hundred sixty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents. If you added the fifteen percent assessment, then you would be up to a total of two thousand four hundred eighty-seven dollars, ninety-one cents. Two Shore Drive, uh, the subtotal is twenty thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy-four cents.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Twenty thousand.
Mm-hmm.
You know what, I think I got enough copies to send this around to all of you, so you'll have no problem again. Sorry. Um, yeah, that includes, you know, taxes, the interest, sewer, and what's owed sewer and sewer interest, and the fees with registry deeds. That's twenty thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars, seventy-four cents. And if you add a fifteen percent assessment, you'd be up to a minimum bid of forty-one thousand seven twenty-one, seventy-four.
That seems high for fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, it's a fifteen percent of the assessed value.
Oh, the assessed value.
Not the amount due.
So it's assessed at two hundred thousand, two hundred and eight. That we're seeing, two hundred plus.
Yeah. Yeah, it was a, so people were living there, well, there was a structure, there is a structure.
Wishes of the board.
Just looking at this, I think we would have, oh, I don't know, I guess maybe. I, I'm just looking, if we, if we were to recoup what is due in interest, sewer, um, all of these other costs, by April first, it would be back on the tax roll. So I'm just wondering the wisdom of the fifteen percent assessment.
Yeah, let's kind of put it up there, or maybe, you may put it around a reach where you don't get many bids.
Yeah, I, I think if you set a minimum bid, it should be that subtotal column.
Because the town would be whole at that point.
Right.
For everything owed, and it would be currently on the tax roll, and-
I have a couple of questions. Yeah, go ahead.
Um, what's the size of that lot, do you know, Sue?
It's a good-sized lot.
A big lot.
It's a good-sized lot.
I mean, is it a buildable lot?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, there's a structure on it.
Well, the point I'm making is, I understand where the board's coming from, but don't forget, what's the, what's the price of a building lot in town? So, don't-
A lot of it is wetlands, though, just so you know.
But it's a buildable lot.
Yeah, there's a building on it now, yeah.
It's a buildable lot, and we had that verified.
The one with the building up front and all the wetlands from behind, across the top of the hill?
Yeah, some mobile home trailer with an addition on it.
Well, build it, get rid of what's there, and then you gotta build on the spot, your footprint, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, it's-
I'm just saying.
The money involves that.
I, 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 I understand. The only thing is, I'm saying is just be aware of-
It has value, I think is what you're saying, right?
Yeah, to a, to a buildable lot.
Yeah.
Yes. Sue, are there, have there been any other costs, appraisal costs, um, legal?
There will be closing costs that will be added to this.
Nothing else?
No.
I, I guess all I was going from is that the town should be looking to make itself whole and get the property back on.
So when do we meet in the middle?
And I think we have a better chance of getting the property sold if we recoup whatever our cost is. If we, we start tacking on the fifteen percent, and, you know, you may get that, because it is a buildable lot, that probably is a steal for, for land down there, but-
The small gain, is it worth?
Is that the business we should be in, is?
Right.
I think we took it to just get it back on the tax roll.
Yeah, I think that fifteen percent assessment is wrong on Two Shore Drive, because I see assessed value at one thirty-two eight.
That's what I was gonna say, because to have a two hundred thousand dollar piece of property down there, that's why I'm, that's what I'm questioning.
Yeah, no, it's one thirty-two.
Thirteen thousand dollars, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
About fifteen thousand. So what, what if we met in the middle and said, okay, look, let's just take half of the assessed number?
But something's gotta be wrong. There's something wrong someplace.
Yeah, the number's wrong, I mean, you're right.
Something's wrong someplace.
Let's see, was it says one thirty?
Yes, nineteen thousand.
One thirty-two eight, times fifteen percent.
Let's see, that's pretty right.
That is right, yeah.
Yeah, it's close.
About nineteen eighty, yeah.
It's got water and sewer, right?
Yes, uh, it has sewer. I think it has water down there, too.
It's on sewer?
Listed here. It has sewer, because they owe back sewer.
Oh, yeah.
There's, I believe there's water down there, Phil, when they ran the fire, fire lines, hydrants, and water mains, there's water mains in that park.
It doesn't say online if it's municipal water.
I mean, the property, the property can support it, it'll do well.
So the question is, do we want to take whatever, the minimum we need, just to cover our costs and be done with it, and get it, get it out of here?
Well, when you set up a minimum bid, that means that's a starting point.
I understand, yeah.
You could get more.
Right.
I guess it wouldn't hurt. I mean, if we go with the fifteen percent assessment added to it, the worst that could happen is we don't get any takers, but I doubt that.
Worst that we end up, that's minimum bid.
No, I mean, advertise, advertise the property for what the property is. It's owned, what it's owned.
Right.
What, it has water, it has sewer.
It's sewer.
Somebody wants a buildable lot for water and sewer, there you go.
That one's down in Lynchville, right? Two Shore Drive, is that Lynchville?
It's, uh, Moose Club.
Oh, it's Moose Club, okay. So, yeah, Moose Club has water.
It's the one that, it was like a double wide mobile home trailer kind of.
Right, and they were living in it, though, until fairly recently.
Yeah.
All right, so-
I'm just promoting we, uh, put these out to bid, uh-
Let's, let's take them-
For the subtotal with the, with the total, with the fifteen percent assessment added on.
On both Shore Drive and Mill Street?
All of them.
All of them?
And Water Road?
All three of them.
Yeah, I'll second it, and if I can just add, I mean, we're looking at people coming into the planning board, and people that are going to the ZBA and Conservation Commission, taking these small lots, subdividing, and going through all of those processes to get a buildable lot, to get a lot that they could put a building on. Here you have a lot that you don't have to go through those processes.
Right.
In today's markets.
But this would be the minimum, but we may get, I mean, it may attract a lot more.
No, I understand.
Oh, absolutely.
But if you, if people buy a, 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 a piece of, a wet piece of property, take the chances of subdividing, the engineering firm, going to the Conservation Commission, going to the ZBA, then they have problems with site distances, because we're, we're seeing them at the planning board.
Just a quick question, if, on the Two Water Road, if the town's cost right now to make us whole is ten thousand, if we add another five thousand to that for the assessment, then another approximately ten thousand for cleanup, for a non-buildable lot that a Butter would just be looking to add to their property?
Non-buildable lot?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's the one with the collapsed building on it.
Right. That would give one a Butter, um, lake access.
Mm-hmm. I'm just wondering, is, I mean, that fifteen percent assessment is half of the, the old quote on cleanup. I'm wondering the wisdom of adding that fifteen percent assessment?
If you're gonna add the class, the cost of cleanup, you're right.
Right, because that's non-buildable.
So we might want to just use the subtotal plus whatever the cleanup cost is, and not tack on the fifteen percent assessment for that.
On Two Water Road?
Yeah, but, hey, hang on a minute. Uh, were we gonna look at this again when we got some estimates, or?
Yes.
So, does it really matter at this point, because we're gonna revisit this one anyway, right?
Well, yeah, I suppose you're right.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we can table it for now?
Just the Two Water Road?
Yeah, right, right.
So these Two Water Road out, and I'll still make the motion we put the other two out for adoption at the-
All right, and my second's still good.
Yeah.
At the total amount with the fifteen percent.
Yeah, the lot on Shore Drive and Mill Street.
Oh, okay, so we got a motion for those two parcels and a second. Do we have a second? Motion by Alan, a second.
Yeah.
By Phil. Uh, is there any further discussion? Everybody understand the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero. Now, Water Road, we're gonna wait and get an estimate for cleanup.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll table that and bring, bring it back before us, at a later agenda.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. In accordance with the hearing officer's order in the BSR administrative hearing, we've received checks from the Health Trust and Property Liability Trust. The portion which remains with the employer equals eight hun, one hundred eighty-two thousand three hundred twenty-four dollars. Finance as deposit checks into a liability fund until the board decides how they would like to handle these funds. The board has options. It could hold a public hearing to accept and expend, which means it would be expended this year on a specific purchase or project, or we could revise the MS four to include it as revenue. Either way, that decision needs to be made by the end of September, so we can put that off until you've heard all the budget presentations. You also have a request tonight for YouTube and Facebook page for GTV. Our GTV coordinator, Adam Kuhn, submits a written request, and that's at tab four F in your packets for authorization under the town's social media policy, to have a YouTube and Facebook page for GTV.
Motion.
I'll make a motion we accept.
Second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Thank you. Um, you have a draft ordinance for the parking restriction on Mountain Road. Uh, if you recall, that was a Highway Safety Committee recommendation that the board accepted, and we were just waiting to see the draft ordinance. That's at four G, and if the board has no issues with that, we'll go forward and schedule the public hearings.
Yes, motion we accept.
When?
Let's take a motion, a motion to accept, I have a second, a second, a second. Discussion?
Um, this is still worded improperly. The highway traffic safety re, made a recommendation to the board for no parking, standing, or stopping. When it was brought to the board, the board recommended going with the highway traffic safety's recommendation for a no parking, stopping, or standing, which was a difference between simply no parking. Uh, my understanding is there are trucks that stop there to offload and deliver to the store. Um, and I don't think you were at the meeting, Sue, I think it was Derek at the time, when we first got the draft, and we brought that up, I brought that up, and-
Oh, okay.
So the wording needs to be changed, it would be no parking, stopping, or standing.
Yeah, and a Roman four.
Is he still here? No, he left. Okay.
Any other comments on that? I do recall that.
Just make that and go forward to public hearing?
Yeah, and that being a Roman four A, right?
Yeah, that's, that looks right.
Authorized, no parking, stopping, or standing signs.
Just, Sue, that was the, uh, June twelfth highway traffic safety meeting. And the July twenty-ninth Board of Selectment meeting that we-
Okay, so one and four.
Roman one also.
Right, got that, Sue?
Private.
Roman one.
Yeah, is the parking, stopping, or standing prohibited?
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay. And Goston Main Street Program seeks permission to use Town Hall for the annual art show from ten eighteen to twelve seven. Also, the request includes Town Hall being open on Saturday.
We need to take a vote on that, and move it forward to public hearing.
Oh, okay, with the changes, that's right, you had a, motion and a second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries five zero zero, we can schedule it for public hearings.
Okay, I thought you were saying that they already voted on it back in July, they didn't?
Hi, highway safety recommended it here. The board accepted the recommendation.
Right.
Then Derek came with the draft ordinance to go to public hearing with, and I noted that the wording was not correct on the-
Okay, did you make a motion then, though?
Yes, I believe it was.
Oh, okay, so we really didn't need this motion.
Well, just that it's right in front of us.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's what's going to public hearing, what's in front of us.
And it's correcting wording, yeah.
All right. Uh, the request includes Town Hall being open Saturday, ten nineteen, from eight thirty to four, and Sunday, ten twenty, from noon to three. Are any of you available to lock and unlock Town Hall on these days?
I can be.
Call as you can?
I can be.
Okay.
It's must be same day as Pumpkin.
That's the, yeah.
That's something really be getting wet anyways.
And I can coordinate that, we are available as well.
Okay.
I'll be doing cook, I'll throw things to you.
Yeah, can you be back up, Nick, if for some reason something comes up?
Sure.
Great.
One of us will get it.
So no problem with?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, can use the hall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Second and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Okay, and according to statute, on eight twenty-two, the planning board voted to, um, recommend, um, the boundary line agreement, provided that the date and plan number were filled in, and also on eight twenty-eight conservation, voted to accept the boundary line in the plan put forth by Robert Todd in the matter of Southern Main Street and Town of Boston. At this point, um, we're ready to move forward with public hearings. And also seek reimbursement of the legal fees, because, uh, Attorney Drescher had reviewed that boundary line agreement, and some changes had to be made, if you recall, which they did make. So, we all set to move forward?
Reimbursement of the legal fees from who?
From, um, Bob Todd's, from Bob Todd's clients, because they said it wouldn't cost the town anything to do this.
Right, okay. So, obtain a motion to move forward with the public hearings.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Thank you, and the owners of Thirty-One Shirley Hill Road request the abatement of interest in the amount of sixty dollars and four cents on their two thousand thirteen property tax bill. They inform us that the check was mailed in June for the first half bill due on July first, but it has never been received by the town.
And where do we usually do, in these circumstances, what do we usually do?
I've never seen a board waive interest on property tax bills.
That's what this is, the sixty dollars and four, oh, four cents is interest. Yeah, because they claim they mailed it?
They mailed it in June.
Oh, I see, you mean, yeah.
But we have never received it.
Never seen this, they claim they mailed it, but I've never seen it.
Right.
Checks in the mail.
Make a, a motion to deny the request.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
Thank you. And the fire chief presents a MOU with the City of Manchester for emergency messaging on the fire stations during emergencies. And if you need any more information, as I understand, the selectmen capa Sanal can fill you in.
The first, this is not time sensitive.
Okay.
So there's no... Doesn't have to be voted on tonight. Well, the City of Manchester, working with Southern New Hampshire Planning and all of the surrounding Southern New Hampshire region communities, established a emergency preparedness committee. Part of the work that they've been doing is providing up to three four-foot window-mounted or exterior-mounted LED message boards. The idea is to have them networked on the community's network, informations network, so that in the time of emergency, a community preparedness message can be sent out over the boards. They're designed to either stay off, or you could put, I think in the MOU, there are some examples of public safety messages that could be put on routinely. The signs are designed with strobe lights on either end, so that if there was an emerg- a true emergency message such as severe storms approaching or shelters opened at the middle school, those strobe lights would go off so that it would catch individuals' eyes as they're going through.
You know, if they would use those like snow emergencies and your stuff?
Could do that as well. Any emergency message. So each community can obtain up to three. The MOUs were sent out so that the communities, the governing bodies, could look at the MOU, decide if they wanted to go ahead with accepting the LEDs. We would not be signing them at this point because they have not been filled in. Once the communities have received approval, at least verbally, then the communities... We have meetings set up next week, actually, for the communities to come and get information on configuration, how they're put up, how they work, how they're programmed. We would then fill out the serial numbers, all the equipment that the towns are receiving. Then they would get the governing body's signatures after that.
Where would they place these, just out of curiosity?
It's up to the community. Most communities putting them up at either fire stations, public libraries, town-owned buildings. The configurations can be standalone programming with a handheld remote, can be hardwired into the network system. Any building that has a wireless, they, we have wireless adapters as well. Weatherproof housing, so they can put on the outside of a building under an overhead.
High visibility, you know, if you have...
Correct. They're visible from two hundred feet.
No, I'm saying, I'm gonna put one for the fire bomb that's kind of off the main beat, you know, I'm just looking at... I guess you could have one there also, we got three.
Yeah, it's really any, any public building the community decides to, to put them on. So again, it's not time sensitive, it's... I think there's a question.
Well, entertain questions from the board first.
Yeah, just two questions. Number one, I'm looking at on the appendix B, it says, and these are for emergency messages.
Right.
And just, I, I, I think it's clear, but just to make sure that it is, I wanted to ask the question. On the first page, C, three C responsibilities. Town of Gofstown is the recipient of grant-funded equipment listed in appendix A. Shall be responsible for, I, the routine care and upkeep of the supplied equipment. And when I look at appendix A, I'm assuming that appendix A is the equipment that's listed. It says Town of Gofstown acknowledges the receipt of the following equipment?
Correct.
There's three of them. That we're only responsible for what Gofstown gets, we're not responsible for Manchester.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to...
Just the equipment that's listed on appendix A.
And, and the reason why I'm asking the question, Nick, is because if you look at B right above, it says what the City of Manchester is responsible for.
Mm-hmm.
So this does not break out what Man... In other words, I'm assuming that Manchester has something similar like to this that says what Manchester is responsible for?
Correct. We have the, the original document with the Department of Homeland Security.
Right.
That we're responsible for, ultimately, for all the equipment.
Right, but are you, you, you follow where my rationale? Because this says what, this document that we get says what Manchester's responsible for, what Gofstown's responsible. And the only listed equipment is only what Gofstown is getting, that's what we're responsible for.
B is listing the City of Manchester's responsibility for the equipment that Gofstown's receiving. Not Gofstown's equipment.
Right, I understand. I understand.
This, this does require us, though, to provide care and upkeep for what period of time?
Routine. Useful, I believe it's a useful life of the equipment.
Oh, was that in here somewhere?
And that's what the grant requirement is?
Yeah, audit depreciation requirements. Under E, three E.
Again, it's B thirty-four.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, and just so that everybody's... So we're also on appendix B. It says examples of non-safety-related messages which are not to be displayed, just so that...
Can I answer your question, Rick?
Sorry.
Any other further discussion, Mr. Board on this?
And if there's, if I may?
Yep, sure.
If there's language that you think would clarify, I can go back and make the changes, because like I said, it's not time sensitive, so if there's...
No, no, I mean, I think it's, I think it's fairly clear, especially at the bottom, the last sentence. Displaying non-safety-related messages may result in termination of the message board memorandum of understanding and return the message board and related equipment.
No, I was referring back to your original question about the responsibilities and, you know, you want that clarified.
It's just that, when you go to A and you see what A is, I just wanted to have that discussion because that was my interpretation and that we're all on the same page.
And just for some in the audience, there are some examples of non-safety-related messages such as bean supper on February second, association raffle tickets on sale, book sales start today, and transfer station closed on Monday. Those are not appropriate.
Fox and Resk ice skating ring clothes.
He's not gonna get that one.
I believe we had a motion and a second, did we not?
Yes, we did.
We did?
No.
Okay, well, entertain a motion now.
All right, I'll make the motion, we accept.
Yep. A second. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries five zero zero.
And that would come back to the board again once the, the information has been completed, once all the information has been filled in.
Okay.
We're behind schedule.
What's that?
I said, we're behind schedule.
Well, let's, let's go to the budget presentation, so we get those folks out of here. We can take up our old and new business.
Do you want, Carl was scheduled for ten minutes before the budget presentation?
We got Carl in here. Carl, Carl, come on up, please.
We'll try to be very brief. I brought Mark Urelo with me. Mark is our mechanic foreman in town. And what we're really here for tonight is guidance from the board. We had put in a CIP request for many vehicles. And obviously, when we put in a CIP request, we don't anticipate getting everything that we asked for. However, when we saw the final work of the CIP committee, we have some kind of serious concerns with just the priorities and where vehicles were shifted. So a couple of things, I think, what we wanted to talk to you about. The planning board has not adopted this plan yet. I think it's on their agenda for this Thursday. In past years, we have gone to the planning board, and we've asked the planning board to consider flip-flopping priorities if we thought, you know, two vehicles made more sense in different ways. So that's one thing, I guess, that I want to just see how the board feels. And the other thing is, if we're gonna keep stretching out our vehicle purchases, we're gonna probably have to make some maintenance, budget maintenance adjustments. What the board was not, or what the CIP committee was not aware of, because it was a failure. It happened sort of just before I was off for vacation, and Mark was off for vacation. But our backup tractor trailer is dead. I could let Mark explain it better than I, but a, basically a valve pierced the piston, so the engine is shot. It's down in McDivet pieces. They've given us an estimate. And, you know, we're talking, it's one of these typical discussions like we've had with the ten-wheeler in the past, and where do you, do you put thirty or forty percent of the cost of a new vehicle into a old vehicle with six hundred fifty thousand miles on it? We wouldn't do it. I wouldn't do it at home. I doubt you guys would do it. However, CIP committee pushed that vehicle out two more years for replacement. So that's an obvious concern. And, you know, probably on a bigger picture, if you look, I provided you a little history of the DPW vehicles that have been replaced in the last three years. We've dug ourselves a very deep hole. And I'm very concerned because we have, though the CIP committee recommended a dump truck, we have two of our dump truck, two of our six-wheelers that are in very similar shape to the ten-wheeler that we did an emergency purchase for last year. And I just, you know, how long before we're stuck in that same position with two trucks that are, you know, frontline plow trucks? We have the backup tractor that is pretty critical. The backhoe at the transfer station is a nineteen ninety-two piece of equipment. It may not seem significant, except that has that claw on the back that crushes and compacts all the cans. It's a pretty old piece of equipment. If something happens to that and we lose it, the cost is more than the equipment. It's, we lose the efficiency and the, the load carrying capacity of the cans. So again, we're concerned that we're playing with ticking time bombs. So I guess to, to kind of make it, you know, I put everything in the memo and tried to summarize everything, but I wanted to get the board's sense, where you think we should go. I'm happy to go to the planning board and ask them to, to consider switching some things around. I'm happy to come in with, you know, Mark and I could sit down and work up some adjustments to maintenance budget if we want to keep the policy of we're just gonna keep this stuff running as long as we can. And, you know, put in money for rental equipment if, if we needed to rent equipment when stuff is down. But I just wanted to get a sense. Obviously, there's a lot of solutions to a problem. We just want to be in, in sync with what you folks think is the best one. Our recommendation was our CIP request. That's what we feel was, was best.
Guidance, we can give Carl.
Yeah. Well, one thing I would say, is I think if we're gonna try to change anything on CIP, I, I would suggest that Carl be at the planning board.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
When it's there, because when questions are asked, I'm not gonna be able to answer the questions. Because I, we can't, I can't anticipate all the questions that are gonna come up. And if I can't answer the questions, that's gonna be a reason for things not...
And I would expect... And, you know, realistically, I, I know you folks are gonna get the overview in a few minutes. I'm sure you've seen it. I've been in this business long enough to know that the kind of increase we're looking at in the town budget isn't just gonna sail right through. So we're gonna be in a position where, as always, you folks are gonna be making the tough decisions of every project on that list needs to be done. I mean, there are no frivolous projects. So it's, it's gonna come down to what are the best, you know, where, what's the highest priority, lowest priority? And I guess what I'm, what I'm here to tell you right now is, the DPW fleet, where I feel very much like we're backing into the corner that the town was in before I got here, which is we're gonna have a whole bunch of parked equipment. And then we're gonna be talking about big lease purchases with a lot of interest and stacking vehicles up again where we're replacing wholesale replacements of the fleet. It took us ten years to get out of that. I hate to back, back into that corner, because it was really tough to get out of it. So I, I guess I just throw it on the table. And again, if, if you're seeing something I'm not, I'm good with that. I, I'm okay with, let's work through it after you've heard some more about the budget. I just wanted you to be aware of it, because it is, in my opinion, you know, I use the word, we're getting into a dire situation, and I really do feel that way.
Quick question for Carl.
Uh, Carl, this is a, a backup vehicle that we're looking at here?
Yeah.
And this, this, just for a spare, is that correct?
Well, whenever the primary, we run, you know, two or three loads a day. So whenever the primary truck's down for maintenance, this is the vehicle that runs. We also have occasionally where we have both trucks on the road because of overflow.
But what I'm reading here is this, this thing just, it swallowed a valve, so it did, one piston, one valve. So you're gonna be looking at one head, one valve, one sleeve, whatever, and rebuild it, maybe one set of bearings. We don't have to rebuild it whole over.
You do not have to, no.
Well, no, so that's what I'm getting at. We could fix this for a lot less than twenty-five thousand dollars and still be a spare truck.
The estimate, just to repair what's there, was over sixteen thousand.
We need to shop somewhere.
Eighteen thousand for the used truck?
No, no, I, I get that, but I mean, if that's, if that's what we're looking at, it costs, we need to shop somewhere else, because that seems like an awful lot of money. If I was to do this in-house myself, I wouldn't have five thousand dollars in it, and it'd be a lot of money. I'm just saying, you need, maybe we need to shop somewhere else besides just raid this one store. Maybe to look around a little bit. That's an awful lot of money. I know, I know what you're looking at as far as the mileage, but if it's only a spare truck, put five thousand dollars in it and keep running it. I mean, and take your money, that twenty thousand dollars, go somewhere else maybe and look at, you know, it could be, maybe well-spent somewhere else. If we need something else, like the backhoe needs to work, you know, take that twenty grand and go there with it.
We, we had the backhoe evaluated as well, and...
I was reading that, yeah.
Yeah, Caterpillar's opinion is that it's such a small piece of equipment, it's not worth rehabbing it. It's, it's too much money to put in on an old piece that, that's small. And it wouldn't be a cost-effective way to do it. So can we do it? Yep. You know, just like we put the body on the old ten-wheeler, we could do it. Technically, we did it. Did we gain anything in the end of the day? I'm not sure we did.
Well, I think you do, you gain a little faith to the taxpayers, because you're trying to save money, and that's, that's the key right here for everybody, really, when you come right down with it.
Yeah, but saving money in the short term is different than long-term savings. In our opinion, the long term, is that we do more cost-effective replacements, and we don't spend all kinds of time and money with down equipment, bad equipment that we're constantly band-aiding. And we're not looking for a brand-new fleet.
No, 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 I understand, but, you know...
But when you get to a point where the frames are splitting and they're falling apart, it's time to be proactive.
Phil? Carl, on the freight line, was the intent to replace that one and then make the other one the backup?
Yes.
How many miles are on the other one?
It's more than three fifty or three seventy-five.
About how many?
It's approaching four hundred thousand.
About how many miles are put on it a year? Any idea?
What is it, five years old? Three seventy-one, it's an oh-four. Yeah, but it's three hundred seventy-one thousand mi- on miles. It was bought in oh-four, so...
It's approaching four hundred thousand.
Sixty thousand a year. No, fifty thousand a year.
Okay, so we put fifty a year on it?
Thousand miles a week, that's not a whole lot for a truck, is it?
No. What motor is in the freight liner, do you know?
The newer one?
The one that's got the swallowed valve?
Uh, Caterpillar. It's got a cat motor in it. I can't remember the exact one, I think it's a C-clo.
Where's the, where, uh, the, the repairs? They're over at McDivet? If the engine went into that truck, the other, the mileage on the rest of it, the rear end, the transmission and everything?
It still all has more than six hundred fifty thousand on it. That only fixes the motor. If you fix the motor, it doesn't fix anything else.
Right, I understand. That's, that's why, that, that's my point. Now, is that, uh...
The rest of the truck.
Does that have a, does that have a turbo on it?
Yes, it does.
But it doesn't have the same horsepower as the, with the gearing of the other truck, right?
It's got a different transmission. It's more of a long hauler, it's a long tractor. It's not really... It's not the best suited for, especially where we're going now.
Yeah, getting up the Bethlehem Plaza.
It's not really the nicest truck for it, no. Over the highway, flat landing, maybe would be nice, but it's not really designed for what we're using it for. It's a good backup, but that's about all of it.
Any questions?
Just a comment.
Yes.
I understand about the, the vehicle that just went down. Some of the other items that you're talking about are things that were discussed at CIP, and I, I guess I just have some reservations in encouraging a department to go to the planning board because CIP didn't provide the, the items that were requested. Because I, I don't know if we want all of our department heads doing that when CIP doesn't. And I understand your concerns, they're very valid.
Well, and that's why I'm here.
And I, I think we just need to work through the process and take that into consideration when we see CIP as a whole versus just the one department, as you mentioned.
Right. So let the process play out, is what we're saying.
Yeah, but if, yeah, let's the process play out, that other truck breaks, now we go back in the rentals of the vehicle. Now we're spending more money. Yes, I, I understand, but I think the concern is that we're taking a planning process... Yep, I understand that. And trying to massage it into a budget style. I think the issue that we need to try to find out is, the question is, is how do we come up with the money to fix the truck? I mean, I guess, they, they put this out for one year?
Two years.
They put it out for two years. Two years. We're putting, we're looking at fifty thousand miles a year, okay? Regardless of whether it's five thousand to fix the engine, or it's twenty-five thousand to fix the engine, we've gotta come up with that money someplace to fix that engine. But then again, as was pointed out, six hundred fifty thousand miles on a transmission, on the rear, on the suspension, on every single thing else. I mean, you've got air brakes, the brakes, and everything else that are on that thing. At fifty thousand miles a year, are we gonna be able to buy a hundred thousand miles? Let's put out two years. That's the question.
If we're putting on fifty thousand miles a year on it, we're only running a hundred and ninety-two miles a day, average. Less than two hundred miles a day, as we're running.
Now that you're going to Bethlehem, is that?
Yeah, but six hundred and fifty thousand miles, I guess what I'm trying to really hear is that, most major trucking companies don't even look at major overhaul on a truck till it's half a million miles on, anyway, and they run them a million miles before they think about getting rid of them. We should be able to get a better system going, where we can take care of these things and run them longer, is what I'm trying to get to, I guess. Because they certainly will go that distance, these trucks are made to take and go a million miles all day long nowadays.
That's highway.
Well, that's highway, I know what you're saying, but you're running highways, you're running trash, all you're doing, you're running highway.
Yeah, but you're also going up the.
I, I got that, I, I know, but still, your trucks don't haul any different than most of the other freight trucks haul. You, you gotta look at that process, I think, and, and take better care of these things and get them to go longer, because it's a big ticket item. You're talking about buying a lot of big vehicles for a lot of big money. It has to be dealt with, I understand that, you, you gotta get more out of the box, I guess, is what you have to do. That's what I'm trying to get to. My brother's got trucks that got six hundred, seven hundred thousand miles on them, they're, you know, and they're running every day up and down the road. He's got a piece of equipment that's got almost eighty thousand hours on it, eighty thousand hours on a piece of tractor equipment. That's unheard of, but it's maintained and taken care of. And that's key, because it's a big ticket item, but you're talking about six hundred thousand dollars to buy that machine new. But, you know, you've run it now for thirty-five, forty years, now you can take that money and divide it up, now you've got some serious value out of it. And I think that's where we need to look, some. Have to get into a program where, save some money, I guess, and try and make it work a little longer, stretch a dollar, everybody else doing the same thing.
Phil, did you add something?
No.
No?
The money for the repairs, Carl, is it in your budget, or are you gonna be asking us for the money for it?
Well, we, we don't budget for that.
No, I, I understand, I know, I understand, but I mean.
Coming from somewhere.
Yeah.
We, you know, we really weren't here to.
No, I understand.
Solve that one problem, it's kind of a big-picture thing, and
Yeah.
Wanted to get a sense of the board, because if, if we're gonna get into a more aggressive maintenance program, we can deal with that as well, we just need to budget accordingly.
Right, I hear where you're coming from, Carl, we need to get into a rotational program where we're replacing one piece of equipment every enough so many years, so we don't get caught in this predicament again, where we have to replace a large number of vehicles at a huge dollar figure.
Right.
All at once. And, you know, by the, being pushed out of the CIP matrix, that's, that's squeezing us back into that same scenario that we were faced with ten years ago. So, yes.
And there's also one thing that we have to remember. Uh, when we had this truck, we were going, this truck was going to Bedford. When you go to Bedford, you got a long haul up to Maine, and when you pull into the facility, it's paved. Where you dump the load, right?
Yes, it was.
Now, now we're going up the mountains, we're going up through the White Mountains, going up to Bethlehem, and when you pull into the facility, what are you driving on?
Mud.
We, we've been charged for dozer pulls to get out, you know, it's so muddy that they.
Well, I mean, so you've got two different environments that the vehicles, and the thing is, is that we don't control, if you're buying a vehicle for the life, what's, what's the expected life? How many years of this vehicle?
We've never really had one before.
But, I mean, I, I mean, you know, at fifty thousand miles a year, ten miles would be five hundred thousand, so you're looking at ten, twelve, twelve years, I'm just.
Planned for ten in the beginning, but it was a poor sort of track, just like that, so.
Right, well, by those numbers, my point being, by those numbers, we're looking at ten to twelve years to put six hundred thousand miles on it. And our contract length with, who we now have, that we're going, I mean, we don't know where we're gonna be going in four or five years from now, it may change. So, we don't control the environment, was, is my point.
So, would we, would we be allowed to take money out of the one-time purchase, uh, call it the slush fund, rainy day fund?
What are you talking, which one?
Expended, expended. Unexpended.
Fund balance, unexpended.
You need to vote at town meeting to take, use, um, fund balance.
What, what we've ended up doing in the past is we just knowingly overspent. You know, we take the maintenance line, it's overspent by eighty grand, and, uh, I think the selectmen make it up at the end, wherever we're gonna make it up, but.
Usually they think the department.
Yeah, but I know that's what you always tried to do.
But, but that is an option, to look at the unexpected.
I don't think Diane has eighty thousand in her.
But, so that, so that is an option, to look at the unexpected fund balance, because as long as it's for a specific purchase, which is would be a specific piece of equipment.
But it'd have to be at town meeting.
Tell me to vote.
I understand, I understand, but it's an option.
Yeah, I don't know how critical this is before then.
I just, I'm just, that is an option, though.
Yes. What's the cost of this vehicle? A new one?
About a hundred and ten.
That's what I thought, okay, it's a hundred and ten one.
And how long would it take to repair? A new motor?
Engine gave me a time estimate, but I would assume within a week or so.
I think probably, maybe one of the ways to go is we, we have the money to repair the engine, and we look at the avenues of a one-time purchase with, with the funds, bring it, bring it forward and see if we can get Carl the money to buy a new tractor. I mean, we talk about this all the time, every department is like this, we talk about this every year. The snowball just gets bigger, 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 and every year, somebody else is gonna be here knocking at the door for money.
Yes, question, maybe it's, uh, maybe a solution, I'm not sure. What if we had this motor rebuilt? I know we're talking about twenty-five thousand dollars. And then look at buying a glider kit, which means you can take all your components that are gonna be reasonably new, and put them in that glider kit, and save quite a bit of money by a new, you'll have a new truck essentially. It'll only be whatever your truck is.
Glider kit still takes a transmission axle.
That's right, but that's not a big deal, you can rebuild all that, that's, it's not, you can't rebuild all that, as long as it's not broken half.
Thing, but that's, when does, when does it cost effective?
You paid eighteen thousand for this vehicle?
Seventeen-eight, I think, and then we had to modify the, the system on it for the hydraulics, was a couple thousand dollars, so around twenty thousand dollars was spent.
How long ago?
In oh-four.
Could, could we do both? We replace the engine and also work towards replacing the, the actual tractor, and then when we do that, keep the engine. Couldn't we, couldn't we keep the engine as a spare engine for when the next vehicle needs an engine? We, I mean, we wouldn't lose the investment on the engine, would we?
I think that truck, as Mark said, I, I don't, I don't believe all our fleets got the cat engines in them, right? I mean, it's a, it's a very, that's a tough one to deal with. Specifically, one, one engine, that wouldn't work.
You're only changing a little more than a motor.
Yeah.
The other thing, too, uh, well, I, I, I would, I would, um, I would think that we wanna, we're gonna repair the truck. What we might wanna do, and this is a thought, okay? Hold off or look into the, the, the new truck, okay? Because the new Caterpillar, Caterpillar's coming out with, is it Caterpillar Cummings, is coming out with the new engine for LNG.
I heard they're not very good on power, though, for.
Well, it, it, and, and that's, it, it may not be good for our application. It's probably good for, uh, from east coast to west coast. Whether or not it's good to go up the ma, you know, for that application, but it's just one thing that we may wanna just keep an eye out on and try and get some more information.
You thinking about grants, is that why you're thinking that?
Well, not only that, because the savings, the fuel savings. UPS is buying, is, is contracting, uh, its new trucks are gonna be the LNG trucks. Okay? And, uh, uh, Cummins put out the experimental motor that they had, and they're going into production this fall, and the new trucks are coming, and Ford's coming out with an F-one-fifty LNG.
So. Repair, purchase new.
That's the way, that's the way, that's the way I would like to go, Mr. Chair.
Repair this one?
Yes.
Purchase a new one with the, uh, and put, put this on the, the ballot for?
Yes.
Use of the, uh, unexpended.
And hopefully, hopefully it'll, it'll last and work us till then.
We'd have to sell the voters on.
We'll sell it.
Others?
I'd like to deal with one thing at a time, maybe if we're gonna repair, then repair, and then have the discussion on replacement later on.
If I can, I guess the thing is, is on the replacement, how long is our contract with, uh, where we are now, where we're going now?
I think it's seventeen.
Through seventeen?
I think so.
In that contract, you have the option to go another location, right?
Yeah, we can, we could go to Allentown, but it costs us more.
How so?
Tipping fees?
Yeah, it's twenty dollars more a ton.
How much more?
Twenty, twenty dollars more a ton.
And how many tons do we usually carry?
Well, five thousand, well, for, per year, five thousand tons a year.
No, I meant per load, I'm going, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking of it per haul. I mean, Alan broke everything down to how many miles we were going a day, so that's why I'm, I'm trying to look at.
Same mileage, huh?
In, in, into the day, well, yeah, the mileage, and the other thing that I'm looking at is we're not going over the, we're not going up the mountains, and if we go to Allentown, you said Allentown?
Right.
If we go to Allentown, are we going on mud and sand?
No.
We're not going on mud and sand, so I think what we need to do is we need to take a look at that difference in tipping compared to what we're going through.
Fuel cost.
On, on, on the truck. On, on the truck, and the thing that we, you know, we, we, if this particular truck is not, I understand the difference, I mean, it's got a turbo on it, it's, this truck, it's a long haul truck, it's great for, on flats, east coast to west coast, down, up and down ninety-five, okay? When you start going up the hills, up into the White Mountains, all right, you lose efficiency. And it may, we may wanna look at a different engine, or a different gearing.
Carl, can Allentown handle a lot of trash every day, or was there a question on that, or something about that?
Well, the, the thing with Allentown, which wouldn't be our problem per se, although it would add to wait time, but we'd be hauling a hundred-yard compacted trailer in, we would dump it on their floor, they would have to pack it into open-top hundred-yard trailers, so it would take one and a third trailer, or something like that, for them, to get our load out of there. So, it, that's why Casella was willing to give us the break if we hauled it directly to Bethlehem, because if we go to Allentown, it's going to Bethlehem anyway.
Right.
What are we hauling for tonnage on truck? Average, twenty?
About twenty-seven, twenty-seven or twenty-eight tons.
And we're adding an extra hour and a half in the morning, an extra hour and a half? Wasn't there something about time as well, in the morning and in the evening?
Yeah, I think Bethlehem's like a four-hour round trip, and, you know, Allentown depends how long you're waiting.
So, I guess the question I'll ask you, when we take all of this into the grand scheme of the picture, is it actually cheaper in the long run to go to Allentown, even though we're actually paying twenty dollars more a ton or something?
No, it's cheaper to go to Bethlehem, as long as we can get it there. In the last quarter of the report, didn't I give you guys a summary? If not, I can forward it to you.
I think you did.
I did the math from when we started going to Bethlehem, and I was comparing it to Allentown, and it's, it's worth saving the money if we can get to Bethlehem. The question is, can we keep getting to Bethlehem?
But, did you factor in vehicle replacements when you're comparing the cost, because that seems to be an issue?
Our costs are fully loaded, so it does incorporate the new vehicle costs. You know, we do have that factor in the hourly cost of a vehicle that we track. So, it does include that.
Just a quick question, what, um, you know, we're talking about going to Bethlehem, Bethlehem's coming in wintertime, wouldn't it be a lot easier for us to just to go to, I mean, time-wise, if you can make two trips on a snow, do you go on a snowy day or not?
We, we've gone to Allentown if weather prohibits, and we also, we have an extra trailer, so if it's just a one-shot storm,
Yeah.
we won't bring it up that day, we'll store it and try to squeeze two runs when the weather gets better. So, we try to manage the weather, but if we had a long drawn-out weather event, we would just go to Allentown, you know, with a load of two. And the options ours, to make.
Can we negotiate those guys down, Eddie?
We, we, we did that a few months ago.
Always time to ask again, you never know.
Well, where do we want to go from here? We need to get Carl some direction.
Gotta get the truck fixed, that's, that's the first priority.
Well, yeah, we need a truck, we need another truck.
Yeah, correct.
Is there gonna be a repaired truck, or is there gonna be a new truck, or is there gonna be a combination? It can't sit at McDevitt.
Yeah, I think McDevitt's gonna throw it out pretty soon.
My, my feelings would be, let's repair it, but let's not go with a brand-new motor, that if we're gonna have this truck as long as it's gonna be a spare, it's just, I know, it may sound like a Band-Aid, but if it's not completely, if the motor's still good, and you only got a couple pistons or whatever, maybe some new rod bearings in the bottom. That'd be my choice, and you'll save a lot more, a lot less than twenty-five thousand dollars, I think. It doesn't mean that McDevitt has to do it either, you know, there are the, there are other options out there, other people can do it.
I'm okay with that.
You're okay with that?
Okay with what?
Repairing it to get it running.
So, it, so it sounds like, and let me just, because I, I'd rather turn him loose to see what options he can come up with, but the cheapest repair we can come up with is kinda what everybody seems to be willing to.
And I'm not in favor of that, sorry.
Neither am I. But I'll do whatever I'm told.
Let the record show, I'm against that fix.
What would you prefer to see?
I would like to see the engine fixed.
We're not talking about not fixing it, we're talking about fixing it.
But, no, no, don't, don't put, don't just put a half a Band-Aid, let's fix the engine, let's fix it the right way, let's. Exactly, I mean, it's something we need, I mean.
Why, why do a sixteen thousand dollar repair, or just repair what's there when it's like twenty-two to twenty-five, to do an in-chassis that does the whole motor almost? I don't understand that, to save a few thousand dollars.
That's, that's always gonna be my next comment, right there. Yes. I was gonna ask, is this a six-cylinder?
Yes, it's a straight six.
It's a straight six, so you basically have the block, you got your sleeves, are they, they're wet sleeves?
Sleeves would all come out if they do an in-chassis.
Yeah, but that's the same, yeah, they're wet sleeve, and you got the head. And when you get the engine, you're getting, wha, what are you getting for, for the twenty-five thousand dollars for the engine, what are we getting?
Basically, a top half and new sleeves, new pistons, the cranks most likely not gonna be touched. I don't think it's touched.
On a rebuild?
It's an in-chassis, so they're not gonna pull it. They're gonna do the whole top end and the, and the, and the sleeves, I don't think they pull the crank.
Well, I guess, I, I guess what I don't understand in here, it says the cost, estimated cost of a new engine will likely exceed twenty-five thousand, which.
That's not a, that's not a brand-new motor, no. That's redoing, that's an in-chassis repair, that is not a brand-new motor.
Well, I assume the new engine was a rebuild.
It's an in-chassis repair, they don't actually physically take the motor out of the truck, they tear it into pieces in the truck and redo it.
So, I guess my question is, what is the difference between what Mark is talking about and what Alan is talking about?
All new pistons, sleeves, okay, go ahead, let, answer it.
Which one?
What Alan, what Alan wants to do and what I want to do.
If we Band-Aid it, they're gonna fix the one sleeve that's broken, the one piston that's broken, they're gonna fix the head the best they can, and they're gonna slap it back together.
Okay, and to do that, change the piston, you have to take the head off, am I correct?
It's already off, they had no choice, they had to take it off to find out what broke.
What's that cost? What's that cost?
It's about twelve hundred dollars, give or take, right now, they're around twelve, fifteen hundred dollars, and stripping it apart, finding out what they need, and having it sitting in their parking lot.
And then putting it back together.
So, that, that's on top of the other money, that's not included in rebuilding it.
Okay, I guess what I, what I need to know is what are we getting for twenty-five thousand dollars versus, I understand what Alan's, and the head's off, we're gonna pop the piston out, we're gonna take the rod off, we're gonna put a new piston on, we're gonna quick hone that thing, break the glaze, we're gonna throw.
Piston rings, all new sleeves,
Sleeve.
Top end, new head, it's, the whole top end's getting done, with piston and sleeves.
I guess my whole problem, the whole deal, is I'm just trying to get to you guys, is that this is a spare truck, it doesn't have to have a brand-new motor. If we're gonna try and save enough money to get a newer truck, let's just put the new sleeve, the new piston, repair the head, put it back together, it's your spare truck sitting in the door yet, you've got it still, it's still good. And if we can get that done for five or six thousand dollars, or, or whatever, I mean, I can't see it spending. Then the day, then, then the day he's driving that, your fix, then he's driving your fix, and let's say the other piston goes south.
So be it.
And then, so be it, then we spend another. You spend twenty-five thousand dollars on an eighteen thousand dollar truck. That's what I'm trying to get to.
Yeah, I understand.
There is one other solution, which I'm not in grand favor of. The old. There is one other solution, which I'm not in grand favor of, the old ten wheeler, that's sitting in the yard still, has the exact same motor, but it's got more than twelve thousand hours on it. We could stick that motor in there, but I don't know how long it'll last.
What's the ten wheeler that's just sitting, why, why are we just?
It's the one we replaced.
The body. I haven't stripped the other stuff off of it yet.
All right, that's, that's the sterling, right?
Yes, that's got a C twelve in it.
How many hours does the one that just blew a piston have?
It never had an hour meter in it, so I can't really answer that question. I mean, it didn't get an hour meter until we put it in there, and what did we have on it?
And the, you know, the ten wheeler is a whole different application.
I don't know what the hours currently, since we put it on.
You know, the, I guess the point is, and what I was gonna suggest, if the boards, and what I think I heard is, what Alan just said actually made the most sense to me too, is if there's a general favor that we're gonna try to replace the truck with a new truck in a timely way, not two years from now, but
Right, exactly.
in the next budget cycle, we can somehow figure it out, and I'm all over, let's put the biggest band-aid we can afford to put on the truck, get the thing running so it's a backup and we're good to go. We can let him make all kinds of phone calls and find the absolute cheapest way to do that, I'm good with that.
You've got the money in that budget, I'm sure.
I hate to put a sixteen thousand dollar band-aid to know that it's gonna pop and I'm gonna be, you know, three months from now looking for another twelve thousand.
There's some assurance that there's a new truck in the foreseeable near future.
Yeah, I mean, it's a lot different if he's just trying to keep something limping for five, six, eight months than two years, and that's.
And that's my concern, 'cause we're looking a hundred thousand miles, two years.
So Sterling's at twelve thousand hours, he said, give or take?
I just.
The one that's disabled and laid up?
Which number was that?
I don't think it's on there anymore.
Yes.
Crystal ball question. Would you have more faith in doing the band-aid fix on the existing engine, or taking the, the other engine and putting it into the?
I think it's a fifty-fifty shot either way you do it, but it's a sixteen grand, I'd rather take the one for free and stick it in there.
But if we repair, if we repair the one that's in there, we've still got an engine in, in reserve.
Oh, that's, that's, I mean.
How long does that engine sat idle?
It won't matter.
It'll start right up.
That'll fire right up like a doctor.
Yeah, it will be a problem.
There you go, you have the backup engine.
I mean, can you find enough money in your budget to just fix that? I mean, I can't believe you're gonna spend one, five, six, seven thousand dollars to repair it. I don't see that being, if they're repairing the head and doing the one sleeve piston, they may put a bearing on it, one piston, 'cause they may have got hammered a little bit when it came through there. I understand that, but and if you're gonna use that as a spare, then you've also got the ten wheeler as a backup, it's sitting there, nobody's using it, you've got that motor, worst case scenario, put it back in there, and you're down a couple days, not the end of the world. I mean, it'll fit right in. It's, it's a, it's a fit all, correct? Come on now, you know it is, you know it is.
You can fix anything you want, it just depends on how much you wanna chase it.
The other half of the argument is we need to keep pushing to get a new vehicle into the CIP matrix earlier as opposed to later.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's the other half of the game plan.
Right, but, that's fine, but let's expend everything we got down to the.
Well, I'm just saying, as long as we all understand and recognize that.
If we're gonna get into more and more major repairs, we can't keep up now, just trying to main, service them and maintain them, I mean, if you wanna get into bigger repairs, I mean, where am I?
You can find that out, somebody can do that.
Find it out, better get that one.
There's, there's people out there that'll take that motor out and snap it in a day. I'll, I'll give you some phone numbers after the meeting if you want.
I want it warranted, I just don't wanna slap together to where I have to go chase it ten minutes after I put it together.
I'm not talking about that at all, Craig, I'm talking, you can, you can get this done, Craig, yeah, sorry. You can get it done cheap, believe me, it's, it's out there, you guys gotta just shop it a little bit and it'll happen.
All right, so what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is, let's, let's get this one fixed.
Yep.
As best we can, we know we've got the other motor in reserve if something goes wrong with this one, and we've gotta focus on getting a new vehicle into the CIP matrix sooner as opposed to later, to, to be the real solution to the problem, then we've got a number of ways we can deal with it, is that?
And, and is there concurrence, it'd be better for me not to go mucking around with CIP, 'cause I, I'm good with not going to another meeting, obviously. I just, uh,
Me too.
I, I hate letting things flow without just putting on the brakes and letting people know there's a, if there's a problem, but I'm, the reality is whatever, whatever comes out of that, you guys are gonna have to deal with anyways, so.
Right, right.
Thanks.
Yeah. So, is that enough guidance for you?
I think so.
I'll show.
Yes.
I, if you can just, for a second, and I know we have budget coming up, but Center Street?
Yes.
Can we just?
I can run.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, run very fast and.
I would run.
Is, is, what can we do there in the short term to alleviate that, that runoff?
From that storm, I don't think we could do anything. Is, you know, we could look at a berm, I'm not even sure if there's a berm across the driveway. But that intensity rain, I don't think there's much that we could put there that would've stopped that. You know, as far as the damage to private property, you guys have all heard that one a million times, you know what the law is, people don't like to hear it, but that's the way it is.
Is it our drainage that we put there though? I mean, is it?
Most of the problem is what came through the driveway.
Came down, came down Juniper because all of the, the driveway drains were all plugged, water came out in the street, straight across and.
It actually came between the, um, the Nurse Bel Air and the Rand's property.
Yeah.
Downstream from the Catch Basin overflowed the sidewalk and went out into the street and then right across the street and then down.
It comes from a lot of different places. And, you know, back when we redid the street, we actually moved the drainage at the request of the then homeowner to try to improve. At the time, the water just blew right in the driveway and there really was no drainage. So we tried to direct it further away from the driveway, but these real, real, real heavy storms, this still happens. Very steep grade coming down there.
I am. I've been on this, I've been on this since day one.
I think I'd like to take a look at it as well.
Sure, 'cause it, it looks like there's, you know, some of the culverts go feeding into the system, look like they're overgrown and.
You talking about driveway culverts?
No, the one particularly between the Rand's property and, and Bel Air, there's a pipe that feeds down, that, that's totally overgrown. Also the one, Juniper.
Yeah, Juniper.
Where, where feeds in again into the drainage system, that looks like it's completely overgrown. And.
Yeah, can we coordinate a site inspection with those who are interested? I know I'd be interested to take a look at it, and see if we can come up with a solution.
Yep.
We can send, can you just send out an email requesting people's availability? I know I'm not available Thursday or Friday of this week, so. Do it late in the day tomorrow, but can you send out an email first thing in the morning, have people respond to their availability tomorrow, Wednesday?
Will you respond to your email?
No. What do you wanna know?
Can I do it tomorrow sometime?
When is the, uh?
Tomorrow morning, first thing, first thing in the morning.
When is the, uh, Bradley, well, you have to do a first thing in the morning, Bradley School meeting's tomorrow, right?
You'd have to notice it.
What time is that meeting tomorrow, right?
If there's more.
I assume seven, I don't know, it's not a town meeting.
I know it's not much, I'll find out.
Call us, you don't need to go, just the chair and I will go, we'll be all set.
Well, Nick's expressed it.
Yeah, I would like to.
You've already seen it, so if Nick and I can go take a look at it, then we avoid the quorum issue. So if you and I wanna.
Sure, I'll coordinate with you.
Okay.
And then we can coordinate with Carl, so.
Wha, what time?
I don't.
Tomorrow afternoon.
Do it lunchtime?
Uh, I'm gonna be in Carcass Mass.
After?
Yeah, maybe, uh, three thirty, four o'clock, somewhere around there.
That'd be fine, I could do that.
Four o'clock, four o'clock work?
I think so.
Okay.
If anybody needs any pictures, I have pictures and all kinds of things that can show everything that happened, where it came through, what drains failed, why they failed. Um, I sent some of them to them, but there's iPod, there's people with iPods that came through, they took pictures of it, and they have that on tape, I have it on tape.
Yep.
My neighbor, Mr. Rand, was out in the yard.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and we may call upon you for that, but let us go take a look.
Okay.
Uh, tomorrow, okay? So we'll meet at four o'clock, uh, somewhere in that area. Okay, Carl?
Right at, right at Juniper.
Yeah, right at Juniper at the intersection.
That's right.
Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, thanks for being patient, folks.
Mr. Cherokee, the police report, I believe it was Officer Tom Defosis, or whenever he was, he was there, he, he's got his report as well, just to back up some of the facts, if facts need to be backed up.
All right, we're gonna get to the budget presentation. Sue, do we need to start with an overview, if you have your, people have been very patient, we appreciate your patience in sitting and waiting for us to deal with these issues, but let's see if we can move through this.
I wanted just to briefly give you the assumptions the department heads made in doing the fair budgets, preparing the budgets. For wage adjustments, you will find the team's fiscal bargaining provided no steps and a one to three percent performance pay. Two thousand and fourteen budget includes a three percent increase effective seven one fourteen. Non-union no steps budgeted, three percent increase on seven one fourteen. Policemen dispatch and fire CBAs being negotiated and will appear as special articles. Insurances, basically what you need to know, oh, the other department has their budgets here too, if they want. Insurance rates will be available by the end of October. Health and dental insurance, no rate increase is budgeted in this budget, as this is an unusual year with the LGC reorganization. The only changes reflected in the budget for these are the known selection changes, for example, someone went from single to two person to family. Also, the Affordable Care Act may influence board's decision regarding future health insurance plans. Disability and life insurance, no rate increases budgeted yet, but adjusted for wage increases, 'cause that's all based on wages. Workers' comp rates, due to reorganization of LGC, the multi-line discount program, which was called TRIM, has ceased. The TRIM program had provided us with a twenty percent discount on workers' comp insurance. Therefore, the two thousand and fourteen department head budget does not include a twenty percent discount. The department head budget was calculated on the two thousand and thirteen classification rates times the current modification rate of point four four.
Quick question, if I may, is LGC the only organization we can get our workers' comp from?
No.
So do we have plans to go out and?
We can discuss that later, but basically, right now, I'm.
That's the assumption.
Yeah. Property liability insurance, uh, no rate increase budgeted, however, the two thousand and fourteen budget is higher than the two thousand and thirteen budget, because if you recall, in the two thousand and thirteen budget, we had taken the deduction for the contribution holiday. That will not be here next year, so you'll see an increase there. Utilities, electricity, the town has signed a contract with Integris for electricity at point oh seven seven three oh kilowatt hours, and we are hopeful that the savings will offset any increased charges in transmission. Therefore, these lines you'll find are basically level funded, unless the department had determined that the current budget was insufficient. Heating oil, we have a contracted rate of three point one nine five per gallon for this upcoming heating season, and we use a three-year average, unless adjustments were made due to changes in heating systems, and so adjustments made for that. Propane, we have a contracted rate of dollar fifty-one per gallon for the upcoming heating season, three-year, year average again was used, unless adjustments were made due to changes in the heating systems during the past three years. Diesel, our contracted rate is three point two four per gallon, which is, uh, pending lower than two thousand and thirteen. Gasoline, contracted rate is two ninety-six a gallon, which is up about ten cents from last year. New Hampshire retirement system rates are the same as two thousand and thirteen, but remember, they're for a full year now, uh, on wages budgeted for two thousand and fourteen. I gave you the rates in there, so you have that. Uh, increase in positions hours, um, police, they have budgeted for reinstatement of the patrolman position and the part-time custodian. Public Works has budgeted two engineering interns and a full-time engineering technician, and finance and tax has budgeted additional two hours per week the first six months for hourly employees to accommodate the implementation of finance software. Uh, this year, we were reaching the point where they're only allowed to accrue thirty-five comp hours and they maxed out, um, so it's been a struggle to manage that. Budget line transfers, due to changes, um, we are, two changes basically, we are able to restructure how we do business. The first change, new finance software will allow us to bill labor directly to the appropriate fund and the divisions. Also, law has changed and governing bodies do not need to vote at a weekly meeting on the manifest, so allowing just a majority signature as sufficient to approve manifests. So now the sewer commissioners can sign off weekly on payroll. Remember how we used to do sewer, we would budget Ellen's wages in admin, and then she would budget her wages in sewer, uh, so that she could reimburse us, and then we'd add it to the revenue side. We don't have to do that, now we can just charge whatever hers are right to her fund. This has impacted the admin lines, obviously, 'cause Ellen was in those, and DPW lines, which will be discussed during their presentations. It will also reduce the revenue from the sewer enterprise fund. CIP, at this time, the budget includes CIP items that which have been recommended by the CIP committee. Planning Board will be voting on CIP recommendations on September twelfth. The only item not included that, uh, that was recommended by CIP is a sixty-five thousand for Pakistan Rec athletic field expansion of the former Barnard Perry Land, because it is funded a hundred percent by impact fees, which are not subject to the municipal budget act. This item simply requires a vote of the board of selectmen after it's been through the CIP process, um, the board just will vote to use those funds, unauthorized use of those funds, and I talked fast.
I just have a quick question.
Nice job.
Yes, Carl.
Yeah, just a question from Mike, to fully understand that, since my board will be discussing that, so that sixty-five thousand is in CIP?
It's been recommended by CIP, but when we get to translate CIP to budget, we have removed it from the budget, because all it takes is a vote of the board.
I just wanna make sure that it's.
Now, if the amount was different and you needed an appropriation, say he wanted a hundred thousand and only sixty-five thousand is coming from CIP, then you have to budget for it, because you need to raise the other amount.
Right, okay.
I see a member of the budget committee, do you want the assumptions?
Sure, thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Okay, any other questions on Sue's very efficient presentation?
Good job.
So the first, first group we're gonna hear from is the library, right? So if they have library, can others come forward? Good evening.
Good evening.
And since we're all on GTV sixteen, if you'd all introduce yourselves, it'd be helpful to the viewers on GTV, once, once you get settled.
Let's take them in to get the PowerPoint going.
Are you gonna project PowerPoint presentation?
We'll try to slide out, Kit Simms.
So again, again, if you could just start by introducing yourselves for, for the viewers who may be watching on GTV sixteen, that'd be a good start.
I'm Mike Lawler, library trustee.
Diane Hathaway, I'm their library director.
And I'm Sue Reel, and I'm also a library trustee.
Extra Mike.
Thank you. No, he told me to put quotation marks around it. If I can start on the presentation, 'cause you do have a paper copy in front of you, um, and then when it comes up, we'll look at that. So, this is our two thousand and fourteen budget presentation. Um, we want to just review the hours of operation. So currently, we are open fifty-one hours a week, ten months out of the year, and then during July and August, we're open forty-six hours. These hours, um, have been the same since two thousand and ten, just in line with community needs as well as managing staffing and. These hours have been the same since two thousand and ten, just in line with community needs as well as managing staffing and payroll. The second sheet is our organizational chart. So it starts with the library board of trustees and then the director reports to us, similar to all the department heads report to the board of selectmen. And then as of October first, this will be the structure in place with full-time associates presumed to be working forty hours. And then the other hours are noted in each block. Does anyone have a question on any of those positions?
I do.
Yes, Phil.
And I apologize, the print is very small on here, so I'm not being job-specific or position-specific. With the, I know some of the positions are not forty-hour positions, some of your positions are less. And I didn't know if you have any positions that are like thirty-two hours. Where was, where was, and the reason why I'm bringing up as far as insurance?
Right, we were the only department with a thirty-hour person. And that, we've shifted five hours from that position to another part-timer based on the staff members' desire to work less hours. So it's kind of worked out.
So I guess, I mean, because we've had the discussion here townwide on, you know, the new insurance requirements and everything.
Yeah.
And we've had discussions on positions being thirty hours or less.
Right.
So I'm just, so you have had that discussion and you...
So all the part-timers thirty or less? Is that what's...
They're less than thirty. They're less than thirty, they're twenty-nine or less right now.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Just comparing where the libraries at from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and thirteen. These are all really positive numbers, so we've increased cardholders by seven point eight seven percent. Items borrowed by eleven point nine percent, and we're on pace to reach a hundred thousand items borrowed in two thousand and thirteen, which is a record for our library. Reference assistance is up one point three three percent. And that assistance by telephone and email is up sixty-four point three eight percent. eBook and downloadable content is up by sixty-one point eight eight percent. And webpage is up five point two two percent. So those are all really fabulous numbers. Fifteen point two two, I'm sorry, thank you.
Those are impressive numbers. What do you contribute to the increase in the cardholders' items borrowed especially is kind of interesting to me. I mean, is there anything other than general program improvements and outreach?
I'm sorry, I was too busy fussing here, so I don't, I don't know what the question is, I apologize.
I'm just curious, you know, what do you attribute the increase in cardholders and items borrowed? Those increased to just program improvements and outreach and getting the word out, or was...
We've never had a drop in any of those, so we just continue to grow and grow and grow despite, really despite our space. People still love us, it's great, it's a great problem to have.
It is, thank you.
We need to take a look at G-Milks. G-Milks is very important to the library. And there's also a decent amount of money related to being a part of G-Milks. So it is a consortium of libraries in New Hampshire.
We're back up to it there.
Oh, we will see about it.
I know, I know, wait a minute, I'm too far back.
What drives the increased cost of G-Milks?
Some of it was the fact that we have a new formula for G-Milks. The dues that we pay is based on a formula. A lot of it is driven by the usage of the system. For two thousand and fourteen, for the first, two thousand and fourteen, the G-Milks budget, we're already in the two thousand and fourteen budget for G-Milks because they're a fiscal year. And so the change came because instead of it being totally driven by the formula, it's now driven by a base and then a formula on top of that. So we've shifted the whole formula, so that's part of it. The other part is the fact that within G-Milks, twelve libraries, that formula piece is still driven by the usage of our automated system. We were one of two libraries with growth, which meant that our increase was greater because the other libraries had a decrease in growth. So we kind of got hit with this perfect storm of increases within G-Milks this year.
Yeah, just a question.
Yeah.
Diane, the base that you're talking about, is the base the same for all the members?
Yes.
And the formula makes up for your usage?
Exactly, that's exactly it.
Do you expect any more expenses this year to that line because you're already over?
Right, we only, we build, we rebuild once on July first, so we've paid our dues for this year.
Any question for that? What is G-Milks? What does that stand, what does that stand for?
It doesn't stand for anything anymore. It's, yes, I have a story. You have time for a story? It used to be, it used to actually stand for something, you asked the wrong question, okay? It used to stand for Greater Manchester Integrated Library Cooperative System. And when we went to the state to incorporate, we were told that only dairies can be a cooperative, so...
Dairies?
Dairy, anything to do with dairy farms.
D-A-I-R. Sorry, I was saying?
So see, so that piece got crossed out, so we didn't have to go back and draw paperwork. And so we're G-Milks Inc., see, it's still kind of dairy-ish, but G-Milks, so it stands for nothing.
Thank you.
But you won't forget that story now, right?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So you don't maintain a dairy herd anywhere?
No. No, no, not at all.
I thought it was some goat milk or something.
However you want to remember this is up to you.
I'm good with that. I'll say, thank you. Yeah, they said anything?
Just remember, it's very important to our library where...
Regardless of what it stands for.
Exactly. Okay, then, we have some great pictures of some of the events and things we're doing with the town. This one is the touch-a-truck, we have teens. And on one of the, the last slide is more of an adult theme. So we really just want to show that it's not just about kids coming to the library. We're focusing on attracting everybody in the community, no matter what their age. Some of the outreach and partnering activities, we have home delivery. Diane and Sandy have worked a lot with the other local businesses doing some, I'm sure you've seen Open Mic Night at Apothica. And they did a cooking, teen vegetarian cooking with High Street Farmhouse. They did go to St. Anselm's College for carting events to get students to know the Goffstown Library because most of these people are from out of town. You've seen the work they did with the clothing center and the fashion show. I think something really important this year is the partnerships with the schools. So in the past, we've worked with the schools. This year, for summer reading, they were involved with Maple Ave, Mountain View, and the high school. And just the high school alone had an incredible amount, a hundred and, the Goffstown High School circulation, a hundred and fifteen times these people, the books were circulated for the summer reading program. So that's very successful, and we hope to continue to work with the schools for that and for the people to have a place to go. You've all seen some of the commercials on GTV, I'm sure, and some of the events that do get up on there. So as you see, there are many activities and many events. I think when we looked at it, there's like three hundred and sixty-four events, way too much for this presentation, but you get the idea that they're out there very busy. So for our budget in two thousand and thirteen, the increase was for two point oh four percent. In this year, the requested budget represents a five point oh six percent increase. With that...
Did you speak of last year again, was two point three percent?
Two point oh four.
Two point oh four.
Yes. So with that, Mike is going to review the budget dollars.
Yes. On the wage side, we're going to stay at our nine point two five FD equivalent. And I believe Sue has already laid out the assumptions on the wages. The only thing that's in there is we're going to be promoting one of the pages to an aid position. She's been cross-trained on a number of the things, so it allows her to do a lot more for, fill in a lot more spaces in the library. I'll go over the other key increases, but as usual, we've put together a very tight budget. And one of the things I think you'll find as we come through here, some of the things we're asking for are things that are really necessary to us and to our operation. And to that end, one of the things that we've looked at in the past is we're maintaining a hundred-year-old building. And it's expensive to maintain at times because you don't know quite what you get into. But it's been well-maintained over the years. And I really, I wanted to recognize Dave Robert for that because he's done a very good job maintaining it. But he also, we've asked, because if we get hit with a seven thousand dollar chimney repair or a three thousand dollar air conditioning repair, we're talking about a fifteen thousand dollar, twelve thousand dollar maintenance budget. It's a significant portion. So what we asked Dave to do is take a look at the entire building envelope from stem to stern, from the roof to the steps, from the grout in the concrete to the boiler system, and give us an idea of when things were installed, what maintenance they may need, what capital improvements we may see going forward. And Dave has spent countless hours going over that. And so I wanted to make sure that that was recognized when we go through the maintenance part of the budget. Additionally, we've had some damage to our elevator room. You're going to see more of the damage repair work and painting in the CIP. But Dave has actually spent a lot of his time fixing some of that damage to the elevator room that we did not have in our, in our budget for this year. If there are no questions on this, we can go to the next slide. The next increase is an increase of thirty-five ten for tuition reimbursement. I believe in one of the prior line items, there was three thousand dollars roughly in employee development that had been tuition. So the increase is actually three thousand five hundred and ten dollars. That's for classes at sixteen, twenty-seven, fifty each with a, for a tuition reimbursement. Our policies require the children's librarian be credentialed. And at this point, we have no other master of library science in the building other than our director. So this is an ability to promote someone that's committed to it internally, to have someone that can fill in in the case of the library director being away for any period of time. Travel expenses, an increase of seven hundred and thirty-four dollars. That's based on estimated monthly travel expenses plus state and regional conference travel and hotel when applicable. Postage, a decrease of a hundred and fifty dollars. More of our communications are being done by telephone and especially by email. And I think if any of you have gone to the library or interacted with it, you've seen much more online. So we've been able to actually realize some savings there over the years. Books and publications, we're looking for an increase of three thousand dollars. The additional money is requested for e-content and DVD collections. One of the difficulties that we're facing right now is when a new book comes out, or it comes out in a number of different platforms. And last numbers I saw, one in every six people or so had an e-reader. So we're getting a lot of requests for e-reader content, and we're trying to match those requests with some of the dollars that we're looking for. And just to put an order of magnitude on it, because a lot of the publishers are still working out their models for how they're going to charge libraries, the library does not pay the same ten dollars for a book download that you may at Amazon. The library's cost is actually more like maybe five dollars for that same book because that same book gets circulated more. And those numbers may change, some, some books actually aren't available from certain publishers, but those numbers may change as, as the publishers actually work out their business models. But currently, that's, that's what we're doing, and the three thousand dollars is in there to meet that demand. Computers and communication, we have an increase there of fifty-eight hundred dollars. And that is looking at replacing the library wireless networks. And we actually went to the town's IT department and asked them for some recommendations because we've been having difficulties with the ability of it, with it dropping out. And it turned out what we had largely was a dated system that was more built for residential use than for a commercial use or especially a library use. One of the examples of this was, I believe Denise was having problems with her computer over a period of time. When Brian went to troubleshoot it, what was happening was she was connecting to a bad wireless access point on the floor above her as opposed to the one located on the other side of her wall, just because that was the way the system had been hodgepodge. So this is going to get us a more bulletproof system. It's upgraded Wi-Fi technology, less hardware, and far easier to troubleshoot. It's built more for a high-use office environment than what we have now, which is largely built for a home environment. And the truth is, it's surprising that the systems that we've had have been as good as they have for the time. So we should get far more mileage out of those as we go forward. Never grow old, glass is always on or off. It's like the cat on the other side of the door. Heating oil, again, you've heard the assumptions, so nothing there. Cellular telephone, Diane has been using her phone a lot on either trips to and from G-Milks or in some cases to have a confidential conversation because they're, actually the way our building is, there is no space within there that she can have a confidential conversation, whether it be with an employee, with council, with us as trustees. So she's had to, at times, literally go out to her car and use her cellphone. So this was just, knowing that she's not a critical employee where there's an access need, where we need to be able to get her 24/7, this was just to help offset the use of her personal cellphone for the times that she's in the library or doing library work. Facilities maintenance, again, we've got no increase in this year. It's a merging of two of the line items from the prior year. And again, we're fairly confident on that number, knock wood, based on the conversations we've had with Dave Robert. But again, where we're talking about a fifteen thousand dollar budget, a single HVAC compressor going out can be a significant part of that budget. The next one you'll see is G-Milks, which is an increase of two thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars. And that dues increase, as you've heard, is based on largely the formula that's tied to our usage, the number of other libraries within the consortium, et cetera. But what, one of the things that G-Milks does for us, just so it's clear here, is it really allows us to amplify our collection. And it allows, the analogy I like to use is it's the difference between the computer sitting on your desk and the computer sitting on your desk connected to the internet. It really allows us, so if you think of some of that money as being in our book and publication budget line item, it gives us an awful lot of access to things that we wouldn't be able to afford otherwise. Additionally, within that G-Milks number, you see that we've had to, over the years, adjust to some downshifting from the state in terms of the number of van deliveries and pickups for books that are being either delivered to the library or picked up from the library. G-Milks in their budget has been supplementing that. And so that's again, one of the other reasons that we see with, for the increase there.
Mike?
Yes.
That increase of, for G-Milks, that's related not to your two thousand and thirteen budget, but it's an increase of what you actually experienced in two thousand and thirteen, correct?
That's correct. The total increase above budget is roughly...
Four thousand.
Yeah, four, five, five thousand roughly. And as you see, we, we overspent that line item. The difficulty is we walk into it where it's a July fiscal year. The difficulty is we walk into it where it's a July fiscal year, not knowing what the next fiscal year brings. So, this is our best estimate for that.
Mike, you have another question?
Yeah. And when you get to that delivery from the state, part of that delivery from the state, the change that they made last year, because that was new, and that's what you're talking about, not knowing. And that's why that line is overspent, by not knowing that complete change. This is how we're adjusting for that change.
That's a good part of it. And the difficulty is, it's been a decrease in not only the number of times that they actually come and pick things up, but also the number of items that they pick up. So, it's been an attempt to address some of that within G-Milks. But the best analogy is it's like changing bus routes. You know, if you have a smaller bus that can only take a certain number of kids, and you say, "We had 15 buses before, we're staying with 15 buses," something breaks down. So, thank you. Next slide, please. Next slide, we talk about our CIP request. I believe that's going to be voted on Thursday. But we're, this is looking at painting and doing a bunch of rot repair to the exterior of the building. As I mentioned, the building's 100 years old. A lot of the stuff you see in it is...
Yeah, right here.
Beautiful. A lot of the stuff you see here is what we're going to face when we start trimming and power cleaning. There's going to be an RFP going out on this that should give us some better numbers. But the difficulty again is when you start tearing into some of this and replacing some of it, you don't know exactly what all is behind it. So, we're going with our best estimate at this point. Any other questions?
Just one quick question. Did you guys ever decide how you were going to repair? That was going to be wooden, or were you going to go with a vinyl or some different style when you got up to that area, the rotting areas?
It will be replaced with wood.
Oh, going to go back to wood?
Mm-hmm.
Do you determine what type of wood you'd go with?
No, we haven't, we don't have those details yet.
African mahogany.
There you go. I knew you would say that.
Is that what it is?
African, paint-grade African mahogany.
Oh, cool.
Let me write this down. If you want something to last.
Right, because they make decks.
Because the wood, as Mike said, it's a 100-year-old building. The wood that's on that building is old growth pine. You can't get old growth pine. Old growth pine is dense, it's rot-resistant and resistant to bugs. Everything you buy in pine today, it could be the same species, but it's only going to last 10 years. You'll be replacing it.
Right.
Paint-grade mahogany is equivalent to old growth is what you're going to get as a comparable product. And actually, to replace, when you get into woodwork, if you compare the price of premium pine, which is what you're going to want for that, because you don't want a number-two pine with knots.
Yeah.
You're going to get to a premium pine. Premium pine will cost more money than paint-grade mahogany. And if somebody tells you that it isn't, you're dealing with the wrong person.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Remember who did your doors?
Yes.
What did they make out of?
Oak.
Right. Who woods they work? Oak and mahogany.
Okay.
Okay.
It's always an education coming to see you people. This is Frank.
Whether it's engines or...
Yeah, hey, I'm just going to roll up my sleeves.
Want to know about parks, call Phil.
We traded you a story for that, though, so we're even.
Or liquid natural gas, right?
Yeah.
Any other questions regarding the budget?
Good. Thank you for the presentation.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See how the other one's coming out? Depends on how you want to look at them, or the other one's going to be...
The laptop.
Was it 5% increase?
Do you have PowerPoint, do you?
No.
Okay.
You don't?
Really?
It's too bad, because he's the one that knows how to work the laptop.
Their range is really small, you know, it's tough to see now.
You guys all have a packet, right?
Oh, we were leaving.
Oh, I mean, okay, all right.
Yes, you should have, I think Catherine put a packet in your...
Is it the 2014 budget line item?
So, you can see better?
There's a bunch of...
No, I'm trying to turn off the projector. There it goes.
Tab six, Parks and Rec.
No, I turned it off. Here.
See you later.
Thanks for the help.
Can you turn that thing on? You turn it off.
I don't know, it's not...
Just unplug it. No, can't do that. Screen it, it'll be easier.
Hit the button.
Yeah, hit the button, it'll turn off.
Should turn off relatively, too.
Well, you guys mind, or you want to climb over there and do it?
Yeah.
Climb over there.
Climb over.
I would appreciate it.
It's right underneath.
The blue light, one of those blue lights. I'm going to show which one.
Just pull that, what you've got to do is pull that table away, right there. Yeah. See, you're going, want to give me that paper that fell down at the same time? I think that's your budget. You may want me to have that.
There you go.
I think we ran out of the envelope.
There you go. For proper cooling, do not unplug.
That's what I mean, right. Thanks.
Rolling away already, Alan, huh?
I just, we ran out of the phone and just jumped out, sorry.
Thank you, Diane.
Thanks, Diane.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick, for your help.
Have a good night. Give me a small fee. Oh, where are my specs? Nice job, Rick.
All right. I don't have a PowerPoint presentation for you. What I did do is provide you guys with a kind of a Word document, line-by-line kind of overview of the different lines. And I also, within your packet, you have a very detailed explanation of what each line is actually made up of. So, if you ever have a question to say, "What is this line all about?" You can go to that document there, and it'll basically tell you everything that's in there, okay? Parks and Rec, I mean, I think we've been very, very fortunate. We've made a lot of headway going into my fourth year now. And we've made an awful lot of headway as far as bringing our parks back to life, bringing our facilities back to life. It's been a lot of good work from many different people in many different ways. We're still forging forward. You know, I think we've started in our parks, our athletic fields. We started a very aggressive maintenance program. And they're looking, if you go out to any one of those fields out there right now, they're looking very good. They're looking, they're not bald. We do get a little bald spots in your goal creases in those areas, but those are high-use areas. We've made some plans, and those type of things are looking very good. A lot of our folks that use it, a lot of our community that use it, I think can be proud of these facilities. I think the Barnard Park has seen a lot of growth. I think Roy Park is getting there. I'd like to see some more over there. But bottom line, and programmatically, programmatically, we've really, we've kind of, really are starting to grow more with our youth basketball, and especially with our men's recreational basketball league. It's getting more popular. And seeing, we actually had a waiting list last year, so that's, there's some growth there. I like to see us get a little more aggressive in the area as far as our senior citizens go. I'm trying to work with Diane Hathaway and myself and see if there's ways where we can collaborate to give our seniors a little more opportunity within our community. So, we have places to grow and go from there. Bottom line, if we start, you go right at your very first line item, which is basically the regular wages. As far as the wages go, we have three full-time salaried employees. We have a director, a program supervisor, and a ground supervisor, all full-time people. That line there, what we did is we just put in a, basically a 3% increase there. And that's based upon, if I'm interpreting this correct, for 2014, it will be a true merit increase. So, in other words, somebody's going to go through a review, and it's going to equate to a number. So, it may be 3%, it could be 1%, it could be zero. Okay?
But you budgeted them all at the maximum 3%?
Budgeted all at the maximum because you kind of have to.
Yep.
And that's effective July 1st.
Yep.
That's a happy year.
So, if I can...
Yep, sure.
The word proposed 3% should be budgeted?
Yes.
Replace the word proposed with budgeted?
Beautiful.
Okay.
English wasn't my forte. Then we have, as far as our regular wage line, the part-timers, we used to call them seasonal, our seasonal employees. Basically, the way that breaks down is you have a total of 10 lifeguards for the two, five at each pool. Those are 40-hour-a-week positions. Those go no more than 11 weeks out of the summer. We have a total of six playground staff, which is also 40 hours a week, and that goes no more than nine weeks out of the summer. And then we have, as far as grounds, some grounds maintenance employees that are full-time. For, one of them goes 12 weeks. And then we've created another position, well, not another created, it's the same position, but we've extended it to like an 18-week type of position. What we find is our grounds supervisor is knee-deep in grass, no pun intended. But he's straight out from April right until October. And between maintaining all the properties, maintaining all the athletic fields, doing your Mountain View Middle School, your Gulf Town High School athletic schedules, our own athletic schedules, painting fields, relining fields, mowing, the high school field, the athletic varsity field, that thing needs to be mowed two to three times a week within your fall season just for girls' field hockey. Because girls' field hockey, the grass can't be any longer than an inch and a half. So, you've got to stay on top of it.
Rick, the 40 hours for 18 weeks...
Yes.
Under the Affordable Care Act...
Yes.
Means that we have to offer them insurance after 90 days.
Yes. So, what I did is, what we'll have to do is offer that person or that position, okay, that position health insurance. Now, that's going to last for the 18 weeks. At the end of the 18-week mark, that position goes to a 25-hour-a-week position. So, in essence, you basically have two months where this, you have to offer that health insurance. So, that's going to cost $479 and some change. $479.29 per month is what that would cost for that employee, if that employee chooses to take it. If. And the thing is, is most of these people that we have, they're all college students. And college students, do they have their own insurance? Whose insurance are they on?
Up to 26 years old.
Up to 26 years old, they're on mom and dad's insurance. Okay, so what I ended up doing, just so that you know, is within that benefits line, I added $1,000 in that line just for that one situation for 2014.
May never occur.
Which may never occur.
Is that per employee or for everything?
Excuse me? For that one position.
Is that one position?
There's only that one position in this situation. In our situation, there's that one position that would fall under that...
90-day.
Beyond 90 days, yes. And then, if they, at the end of that, if I'm saying this right, Sue, I could be wrong. So, as soon as they're back down to that 25-hour-a-week position, they can still have that insurance, but now that's a COBRA insurance. So, now that employee is going to have to pay 100% of whatever that insurance is. We don't have to. So, that's another decision that that person has to make.
And which positions is this COBRA, Rick?
Just the one, there's one, I have one position, a seasonal groundskeeper.
Okay, now, the lifeguards don't come underneath this?
No, remember I said they're only, they're only 10 weeks, 11 weeks out of the summer. So, they're not hitting that threshold. Neither is the playground staff. They're about a nine-week type of thing.
And how many hours do they work?
They're all 40. But they don't hit the threshold.
Okay. And Sue, there's nothing in there that makes us subject to the fact that they work 40? Even limited to...
For the lifeguards?
Yeah.
No, as long as it's not more than 90 days, you don't have to offer it.
Okay.
But I'm concerned about the same person, 18 weeks at 40 hours, and then decreasing it 25 hours a week to 34 hours because if we, and the board can choose their look-back period, the time period, if you choose a year, that averages 30.19 hours over a year, which, well, you'll have to get some direction under the Affordable Care Act. You have to offer the insurance for the full year. Because if you choose a year as a block of time to average it over, it's over. And you may have to offer it for the full year. So, I'll need to get some direction on that.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, if we have to change that, we have to change that. I understand that. But, I mean, for us, it just, I look at the needs of...
The mowing season is...
The season, that season is intense season, and having all hands on deck at that time...
How about two 20-hour people for the 18 weeks, and then increasing one of them to 25?
Sure, we could do that. But I think, I think what you're getting down into then is you're getting into a situation where, are you going to find the people that want that? Most of these kids are college-age students. They want to make as much money as they can. And if you're going to give them a 20-hour-a-week job, they're going to say, "Go pound sand. I'm going to go somewhere else." So, I think you're, I understand and respect what you're saying.
I'm just asking a question.
But I think, I think we'd be, we'd have a higher turnover rate possibly, and we'd constantly be seeking that person that only wants that amount of hours. And maybe there are people out there that do want that. That's true. But I think most college kids, man, they want to make some money.
I think you're, most employers are going to be doing the same thing.
Yeah.
The Affordable Care Act is making a lot of full-time positions, part-time.
And then my other fear, too, is maybe not so much in my area, but in maybe some other department's areas, the amount of training time. You've got to train all these people, and you've got to put money into that and time and effort into all that. And if you're going to be changing people in and out, that's just an added cost.
Yeah. Thanks. Is it possible to look into possibly hiring a part-time helper for this person, even if it's only one or two months or short period in the, you know, height, so that we could reduce his total hours for the year?
Yeah, we could, if that's, if that's the direction you guys want to go. This is what I'm putting forth as my recommendation. And if that really isn't going to work and we're concerned about the Fair...
Affordable Care Act.
Thank you. Affordable Care Act, then that, we'll make it work.
Rick, how many weeks were you calculating?
We'll adjust it.
At 25.
The 25 weeks was...
Oh, 25 hours for how many weeks?
Actually, it was eight weeks, two 16s, 16 weeks.
Oh, okay. Then you're under the 30, okay.
Yeah. 16 weeks, 16 at 20, and then the other ones were 13. But if we had to, we have to. I understand that.
I mean, it's a serious, something that we seriously have to look at.
And what I would do is I would stay and say, "Okay, you know, don't change status quo. 12 weeks is what we've always done, 12 weeks is what it's going to be. And then maybe if we have to do the, you know, the part-time thereafter, we'll do the part-time thereafter. That's fine." But I'm just looking at it from a different point of view.
I guess what I was going to ask is, well, you have 18 weeks at 40 hours, and then you have eight weeks at 20 hours.
No, 16 weeks at 25.
16 hours.
Yeah.
So, at the end of the 18 weeks for your 40-hour person, if that was all they worked, they were done, and just increase one of the 20-hour person to keep going in place of this 40-hour person that we were going to drop down their hours. that we were gonna drop down their hours.
You could, you could finagle it probably.
Yes. So this way, that person would always be on twenty for the eighteen weeks, or whatever the total number of weeks is. She had a one part-time person, that would be longer than the other part-timers.
I mean, it's a challenge. I totally understand that, and...
Yeah, we're gonna see this in the cemetery, too.
And we're gonna have to figure out how to do it, that's all.
Okay, and just follow up on that. What do we pay lifeguards?
Uh, anywhere between nine and ten dollars an hour. Depending on how many years they've been doing it and things like that. We have managers, we have managers that like to head lifeguard. They'll be at the ten dollar an hour. The assistant managers will be around the nine fifty-ish. And then anybody that comes in new starts out at nine dollars an hour, so.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I wasn't, I was just trying to follow along with him.
And what I did do is in the regular, while I'm kinda in this area still, wages part-time, we're actually gonna, I looked at, we have a volleyball program that just hasn't been doing, doing well the past probably three years as far as enrollment, as far as, you know, you might get six, seven people playing on a regular basis, and it just doesn't seem like enough. Whereas our demand is with our youth basketball program, and actually now with our men's recreational basketball league. So I'm gonna, I'm eliminating that position. That was actually a paid position. It was a couple hundred bucks, or twelve hundred bucks or something like that. But I'm gonna decrease that, so you've got a little bit of a savings in that line there. So I'm actually taking five hundred and twenty-nine bucks out of that line, so. Uh, the benefits, I'll go right down. You know, as I said, our longevity, that's all town benefit plan status stuff that we have to follow. Benefits line, I kinda explained to you how I added the thousand in there, and then that's not to say what'll happen in October with the true amount. Contract service line, the contract service line for us is that's every, that's all officials, basketball officials for our men's league, basketball officials for our high school league, officials for our lacrosse league, our summer golf program, our CITs. CITs are counselor and training. We use CITs at our playground program, so monies are put in there for that. And then also, we have monies in there for admin services for managing and controlling the, the passbook for the revolving account. So that's what that's in there. That's an increase. This line is increasing. It's increasing directly due to the demand that we have with our men's basketball program increasing in numbers, and our youth lacrosse program. We, this past year, we actually had two, we, lacrosse goes in, in formats of like U nine, meaning nine and under, U eleven, U thirteen, U fifteen. And we actually added two girls' programs. We had a U nine girls' program, and we had a U eleven girls' program. And that energy is just growing, and you can see it. So I think we're gonna see more there. So there's gonna be a little more added cost in there as far as adding a couple more games, that type of stuff. We're gonna decrease our advertising line a little bit, hundred and sixty bucks. Propane, propane, looking at the three-year average, I went with the, I brought it down by seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. That might bite me, but I think, looking at the average, I think we're doing pretty good there. We're managing that pretty well. Heat and oil as well, I'm gonna bring that down a little bit. The electricity, I brought it down a little bit, kinda in the middle of the road. Brought it down to eighty-seven, eighty-seven hundred as opposed to ninety-one hundred, so bring that down a little bit. Gasoline, our fuel costs for, for our vehicles, mowers, et cetera, that's just a little increase, a hundred and ninety-two dollar increase. And these are all, all those lines are all based on the, the three-year average and then numbers that were given. So that's what that is. Uh, the next one here is, is, is a huge increase for us. The line fifty-three, four-three-zero, equipment maintenance supplies. This is basically our, this is where we get like a new trailer, this is where we get leaf blowers, this is where we get mowers, et cetera, those kinda things. This is the line that we use for that. Presently, right now, our, we have two commercial mowers. We have a SCAG, it's a two thousand and six, sixty-one inch cut. We have a Toro, two thousand and four, sixty-one inch cut. The Toro is, is getting a lot of repairs, it's getting tired, and we're doing a lot of fixing on it. It's got like twenty-two hundred hours on it, the other, they both have about twenty-two hundred hours on them in usage. So what we did is we, we put in a fifteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollar request, and a good fifteen thousand of that is just for that commercial mower. The commercial mower is like twelve-nine, and then a bagger for it would be twenty-eight something. I mean, if we gotta get rid of the bagger, we get rid of the bagger, that's fine. But these, these mowers are very vital to us. I mean, you talk about, you know, EPW and the fleet of dump trucks and backhoes and trailers and all that.
Yeah, but they go six hundred thousand a month.
And that's, I know. But this is our life, this is our life for what we have here. And so that's, you know, a mower goes down for us, we're just, we're playing total catch-up and gets pretty aggravating, and all the users get pretty aggravated as well. Our park, park operation line, that, this is the four hundred dollar increase. Park operation line, that's everything, if you look in your detail, I mean, that's everything from, we gotta have porta-potties at different locations throughout our different parks. Irrigation, we have the Saret Field Complex is, is totally irrigated. The Barnard Football Complex is irrigated, the Town Common is irrigated. So we, we have to, you have to flush all those every year. You have to repair the broken heads at seventy-five bucks a head. So, and they're all older systems. These are not, you know, they've been around for quite a long time, so that's in there. Our whole maintenance, our, our, our field maintenance as far as fertilizer, grass, grass seed, slit seeding. What we've been doing to try and cut some costs and save some costs is we've been, for all our fields, is we do all our own aeration. The school has a tractor, and they have a, a few attachments. They have a spreader and they have an aerator. And they also have a york rake. So we, we use that and we aerate all the fields. And we use it also, we do our own fertilizer, so we're just paying for the bag of fertilizer. We're not paying for, paying for somebody to come and put it down. The only thing that we have to pay for is slit seeding. That's an application process where they actually has a machine that'll actually come along and it'll drive the seed right down into the grass where you have the most success. And then our other, like our Barnard football field is so compacted, just aerating it, it isn't enough, so you have to do something called shatter tying. Shatter tying is actually knives on a, on a wheel that comes along and kinda cuts it up, so it breaks it up so that you can get the, the air in there, the seed in there, and the fertilizer in there. So that's, that whole line covers all that. It also covers, you know, doing repairs to all our fences, doing repairs to the pavilions, doing many, many different things. So that's what that line's all about. Our pool operation line, I brought that down to twenty-three, seven, seven, five. It's a thirty-four hundred dollar decrease. We've made some really, really good headway as far as the safety areas go around the pool. We've, the addition of those liners is, was huge. That's really helping us. The one thing that we'll never, ever get away, I don't think, get away from, I don't think, is just, is the skim lines and the return lines. They're, you're just constantly either breaking or getting a hole, and it's not cheap. It's not cheap to fix them.
A lot of weirds.
Yeah. They're forty-year, when you think about it, those pools, both pools are forty years old. Now granted, the plumbing has probably been done. I mean, since I've been here, I know I've, we've replaced a few lines over at the barn, at Barnyard. So, but, but that, and then the other thing we experimented this year is we used, Mark, you'll like this, we tried some stabilizer, and it's very touchy stuff to use. It's an acid. And if you put too much in, you can actually have too much of acid in there, and you gotta drain your entire pool. You just gotta kinda watch it. So we did an experiment. We went about halfway through the season. We went for it, and it's, it'll lower our chlorine cost for next year.
Good.
That's for sure. And just cross our fingers it doesn't get to the point where you gotta keep adding it, and then you get to that marginal point. You know, so it's just a challenge. It's just chemicals.
It's a learning, it's a learning experience.
Yeah. Programatically, that's a thirteen hundred dollar increase there. And that's basically, a lot of that is coming in from the, with our, our program, the men's program increasing, the lacrosse program increasing. That's where that's coming from. And then I decreased the equipment line, the rec equipment line, so. And then as Sue told you, CIP, we don't have anything in CIP for two thousand and fourteen. That's been removed. We have some other things in two thousand and fifteen, but nothing for two thousand and fourteen. Questions? Questions, Rick? Reasonable.
My only question is, why wouldn't you use the equipment line for your equipment and keep your equipment maintenance supplies for...
I, I agree with you. I think with the new, with the new, the new software coming through, I think there's a couple lines, Sue, that you, we can probably switch around and give them a different name. For this purpose right here, I wanted to keep it...
The way you've been doing it.
Apples to apples, so that you, so we can then maybe progress into...
Okay.
The new format, but you're absolutely right. There's, the whole fleet maintenance thing and all that, I think can be...
Yeah, 'cause to me, maintenance, maintenance supplies...
I agree.
Is not a new piece of equipment, and I will put that under equipment, but we can shuffle that around later.
And it's funny, when you talk to different folks, they all have different ideas.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Questions, Rick?
What is in that equipment line?
The what, the which one?
The last one, equipment line.
The rec, that one there, that's what we use is, that is actually some tennis poles.
Tennis poles?
Tennis poles for the tennis courts, you know, the green poles that hold up, hold up the net. I always keep money in there to replace, 'cause most of them are all, are broken.
Oh, okay.
And...
Gotcha.
You have to just replace them. And if you replace a couple here and there over the course of the years, you're pretty much okay.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Why I have you guys?
Just change a piston.
Yeah, that's all.
I had a whole mechanical education tonight.
And don't worry about that noise coming out of the crankshaft. Yeah, the leaf floor engine, that's nothing compared to what we went through, right?
This is regards to, we had some bids, and Nick brought it to your attention, saying that we're gonna look at this. We were gonna bring it forth to you. This is for the roof at the recreation building, and this is for the two basketball courts to be sealed. Barnard Basketball Court and the Roy Park Basketball Court. The park, the commissioners met, and what they asked me to do is they made, for the two basketball courts, you can see the, up in the couple paragraphs up top there, those were all the bids that came in, different companies and all that. What they asked me to do is, they liked the lowest bidder for the basketball court, both the Roy Basketball Court and the Barnard Basketball, Basketball Court, Tracklight Systems. And what they wanted me to do is they wanted me to go forth and get reference checks on their, on the company and all that stuff. And I got all that, and the recommendation for the basketball courts would be Tracklight Systems.
Just the Barnard?
Both of them, both, both of them.
Isn't Advantage Tennis the rest for the Roy Basketball?
No, what we're doing is we're just putting it all together.
Oh, okay.
Gonna do it that way. 'Cause they're all over the map.
Who was?
All of them.
Oh.
All over the map. And then what we did for the, the roof was quite an interesting process. We had, we had two very low bids, you know, a ten thousand, five hundred and a twelve thousand, one hundred, and then we had two bids at nineteen-six and nineteen-five. And when you dove into it, the actual bids that were meaningful were the two nineteenth's, because you have to go based on the manufact, the product that they're using, the roof sheet that they're using, using, has to be backed by the manufacturer. And the other two bids, the lowest bids, was a grade that wouldn't be accepted. The manufacturer wouldn't back it. So the two bids up top here are actual, based on what the manufacturer would offer. And we ended up going with the same thing. They asked me to check the references on all these, on these companies, which I did. And so the recommendation would be Exeter Roofing.
This is in this year's budget?
This is Parks, this is actually revolving fund money.
Oh, okay.
This is all revolving fund money.
Thank you.
This isn't coming out of any budget but the revolving fund. And actually, why am I on that? It, just so we all know, I mean, in the revolving fund, this year, we, if the, the Barnard track was replaced, so that was thirty-eight thousand dollars that was put into the track over there. And that was use of revolving fund monies. And then we're proposing to use these, the revolving fund monies for these upgrades to the parks as well.
Yes.
Being of the Barnard track, any progress on the painting or ceiling of the track by the high school?
I have not really gotten a good, clear. I, what I was asked to do from the commissioners is actually send Steve Fountain, our athletic director, an email and ask him for a timeline, and I have not done that as of yet, Nick. We've kinda been talking a little bit, but I, I would rather, before I comment on it, I'd rather...
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Anything else?
So we need a, a motion to accept the department head's recommendation for the awarding of the Roy and Barnard Park Basketball Court repair and the recreation building roof repair.
Yes.
Subject to checking references?
And I think that was already done.
You already did that problem? Okay.
I already did that.
Just, just one...
My commissioners made me do that.
So we've got his recommendations, and that's...
Just one quick question on, on the two low bidders. Was, was the real issue, they just couldn't get the manufacturer to back up their roofing?
They were using a lower grade metal.
Okay, okay, roofing?
Yes.
And didn't they, the manufacturer recommend sheathing underneath that, and those two didn't include the sheathing?
Those two didn't include the sheathing, so these two people did over here.
Oh, yeah. No, no, I, I understand this.
Okay, so we need a recommend, I mean, a motion to accept the recommendations from the Parks and Rec Director.
So move.
And a second?
Yep.
We have a second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, tag zero zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doctor.
Thank you very much.
Paul just sent me an email, and he forgot to mention this when he was in. He had, I think, Mark, you were, no, I don't know if you were on this email. I don't see it. He was too late to get into the packet for Monday night, so he was supposed to bring it up tonight, but he forgot. He has an amendment to the McCarlin Johnson contract for the CMAC project for them to evaluate a one-way loop option. New Hampshire DOT has reviewed it and is okay with it. We just need to approve it at the town level. And the amendment would be an additional, I think it was six thousand something.
So to accept an additional six thousand dollars?
Well, that's what the memo said, but the attachment says something different, totally. Let's see. The town requests that New Hampshire DOT approve the attached additional scope of work and authorize an additional, oh, six thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and fourteen cents in PE phase funding. That's not, so that's, the six thousand is just the... Yeah, there's additional cost about, well, there's different options. I don't know which one he's going with.
Additional cost to account for.
Thirteen thousand, yeah.
For match or some, or what?
Yeah, that would be, um, the total project cost, it could be any of those three numbers here, thirteen, fourteen, and sixteen thousand. And six thousand would come from DOT. Did someone at CMAC request a, a look at the one-way loop?
Yes.
Committee.
Oh, okay, so that's, um.
Ask them to go back to DOC and hit that, see if they would allow to expand the scope of the project to include investigating a one-way loop.
Yeah, they're okay, uh, yeah, and I guess DOT is okay with it, but the local level needs approval. I can print this out for you, it's many pages, too.
So, what's the impact to the town?
You pay the difference. So, if it's sixteen thousand and you're getting six thousand, you're paying ten thousand.
Just for doing a study?
Yep.
For the one-way loop?
For the one-way loop, yeah.
No. No. No.
Now, quickly, email Carl, make sure.
At first, I thought it was six thousand.
Yeah, that's the amount from DOT.
Call us, what's the added extra benefit for that study?
Well, look, that there's a number of issues that it may be able to resolve.
Yep, okay.
Most, most notably, the problem at High Elm in Maine, which is a nightmare.
Yep.
But, it would provide improved traffic circulation, at least the concept, throughout the downtown area. And there's some other side benefits, increased parkings, there's some other, you know, benefits to be realized from it as well.
But, you know, I'm already, you've already, that's already been, uh, the traffic study says that's already reduced. The flow's been reduced there from ten years ago.
No, that's Pleasant Street.
I'm sorry, Pleasant, I'm sorry.
That's Pleasant Street.
No, no, High Street, right here. Same thing, they had a, they've had a reduction in the traffic and that stop sign for that, because they were, when they were studying about the library bit there, they've had a traffic reduction there.
Yeah, but, doesn't change, doesn't change the fact that it's a horrible situation.
No, but, they talked about a light being two, two minutes and thirty seconds, or two thirty-seven, and they actually wait, that was only a minute, and thirty-two was.
Well, that's all part, McFarland Johnson studied the effects of a light.
Yeah.
They also looked at a roundabout, they looked at a double roundabout, they looked at, so this would, this would increase the scope for them to.
Look at.
Do a study and give us actual hard facts of what a one-way loop would do for traffic. So, everyone would make a right-hand turn coming into that intersection.
Still waiting for solid numbers, is that what we're?
I just sent off an email to Carl, if the sixteen, the, the worst-case scenario was the, it looks like different options, but sixteen thousand was the highest.
Well, is this time-sensitive? Can we table it till next week's meeting?
Sure. We'll see if he, we'll see if he, um.
I don't know what members we're talking about.
He responds, yeah. It could be, it could be fourteen, no, oh, no, six thousand, I know, is the reimbursement from DOT.
Reimbursement.
The total scope, additional scope is either fourteen to sixteen thousand, depending on which option.
Yeah.
He was recommending. He included a few different.
Let's bring, let's put on next week, so we can get some good numbers.
All right.
All right, we're out.
He has not responded yet, so. He did try sending this all to you late Friday, but, uh.
Didn't work.
The system didn't allow him.
Yep.
To go through. But he put town selectmen, it's supposed to be just the group of selectmen.
All right, we're down to, um, committee reports. Let's do the committee reports. Plan, Pennardville Committee Report, man?
Oh, yeah. Hang on, can I do one first? I know it's gonna take a while. Go ahead. No, good, go ahead. Get your stuff. Do you know what time that meeting is gonna be tomorrow night? Is it tomorrow night, tomorrow night?
I do not, um.
It's at seven, isn't it?
I think it's seven.
Yeah.
Are we gonna run into a quorum problem if too many of us attend there?
Yeah. I just think there's a seat, that's all, we're not there to speak, it's just, doesn't matter.
We're all in one place at one time.
We have a rep, which is Mark.
Yeah, I didn't know he invited all of you. Or would have posted it as a possibility.
Yeah, but I think if we just, if we just go to attend, not form business.
Not discuss or speak for the board.
Correct. Mark is the only spokesman for the board. No. Because you know what's gonna happen? People are gonna start asking questions, gonna start asking questions, well, we have the board, what does the board think?
Well, who's interested in going? I'd like to go as, as the chair, just to have a presence there, because I don't wanna get in.
I think only two should be there.
I accepted the invitation when it first came out.
Maybe you can go.
I don't know, I, I haven't, they called me, what are they doing, so I don't know, I'll wait and see. And the reason why I'm saying, you know, when I brought up to this board about the four alternate, you know, alternates of, of the planning board as an issue, um, I think it's incumbent on us to at least, at least, you know, I mean, the issue that I brought up is the same issue that's here.
But, we were invited to attend.
And I think we meet more than.
I mean, you know, what do you, what do you say?
There's no, no, there's no doubt about that.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think you just have to explain to people that the meeting has, has to be posted. Pretty much been posted right here, as far as GTV is, you know.
No, that doesn't mean.
I understand.
The requirements of it.
All right, basically, a note I was looking for, I can't find, but I can pretty much remember the meeting. Uh, and Mr. Burt made reference to, yeah, it wasn't unanimous, but it was, uh, it was two people that were not in favor of, um, moving the plan forward, but for the most part, the rest of the committee was. We met, we had discussions on certain parts. We took out the entire St. Ace's function of the, of the plan. It's, it's completely gone out of there. We've renamed the Cody Square to Gateway, um, Pennardville Cody Square, something, I forget the name of it, but we've renamed, we've renamed that entire, uh, square. We've, we've taken away that design where Cody's was, that, that behind the diner, that's been completely removed. We, we took out that entire square design, 'cause as, as I remember correctly, as it said, we turned right, there was a stop sign a couple hundred feet up the road. Stop sign's been removed, it's the traffic light and a free flow of traffic up Mast Road. Um, the lights, the, the traffic lights that's there will, will stay there. The alignment of Mast Road will pretty much stay the way it is. We've, we've not changed any of the alignments. We've left it, we've left it the way it was. Um, other than that, I mean, it was general discussion of, of the plan. We went, we went through the plan, we had the plan, um, the plan up there. I was looking for my notes, I know, I know I did take some notes, and I'm kinda short of them right now. Um, we took, like I said, we took away the, the complete St. Ace's College, that section, we took that section right out of it, that's gone. Um, Cody's Corner, page sixty-one, let me see if I rename that the right way. If you look, where did we get it? Cody's Corner's been renamed, um, St. Ace's has been taken out, um, and basically, things kinda stayed pretty much the way they were. I wish I could find my notes. They're here somewhere, it's in this pile of paper. I can't put my hands on them right now, but, um, it, it wasn't, there wasn't very many significant changes, um, to the plan. We, we did some verbiage change, um, language parts were changed to, to do different things. And other than that, um, it was, I'd say, a short meeting. We had a little bit of comment from a few people, uh, after, they were, they were saying things after, but, uh, for the most part, um, the board met and we passed it on, and that's it. Now, it's in the, in the hands of the planning board, let the board make the decision, and my question was gonna be, I mean, if I'm asked to speak tomorrow night, what, I mean, what does the board want me to say? How does the board want me to react to any of the questions? I mean, um, it's still kind of a... I, I don't think, I don't think, I guess, maybe the question I'll ask, Mr. Chair, is the board hasn't really said anything one way or the other, where if this board is in favor of it or not in favor of it. Um, whether we need to say that or not say that, I think would probably give some guidance or some direction probably to some people. Um, I know I was asked, I said, I, I legally can't, I legally can't say nothing. I can give you my, my own opinion, but I was waiting for legal, the legal document to come back tonight, and it's still, it's still not, I mean, the question was asked, what happens if we, if we drop this? I mean, how much money are we gonna have to pay back? How much money are we gonna owe? It hasn't, we haven't, we haven't gotten that answer, and that question will probably be asked tomorrow night again, I guarantee you.
Well, we have a couple of issues I think we need to deal with. First one is the issue of a quorum. Um, and I, I don't think we need, we want to have more than two, two of us there. And I think, um, with that in mind, if it's okay with the board, I'll call Representative Burt and explain to him the legality, legal problem with us.
Yep.
Being there and saying, you know, if he had asked us, we could have properly noticed it, but it's too late now, um, so only two of us can be there, but.
Yep.
One of them will be bringing, you know, comments as, as the selectmen's reference, so.
So, you're gonna be there, Mark, obviously. I will, yeah.
I'll defer to you. I will not go.
No, no, that's all right, go ahead, if you'd like to, Nick, I.
And somebody gonna cover Sue tomorrow night?
I was.
Do we have Sue tomorrow night? Somebody have Sue here?
Yeah, I've got Sue covered tomorrow.
On five-thirty.
Yeah. Yeah, that's me, I got that covered.
I mean, if you can cover that.
You wanna go, it's fine.
No, that's fine, I, either way, I mean, you had said that you wanted to go, so.
All right.
I will be fine.
Okay, I'll, I'll attend then. Okay, so that settles that. Um, so, the next issue is, what's the message?
Well, I just have a question, hypothetical question. Grant funding aside, the plan has been written and delivered to the planning board. Planning board is an independently elected body. Plan, planning board could choose to do whatever they want with that plan. Even, let's assume this board decided to cut the grant, pay back the money, planning board still has that document and could still decide they wanna add it into the master plan. That's not dependent on the grant, I would assume. Planning board could still decide they wanna go forward with zoning changes. I think the, the horse has left the barn, if you will. The plan has already been written, you can't unwrit it, they already are in possession of it. They can go forward and recommend or create whatever ordinances they want at the end of the year, regardless of whether or not this grant document is in place or not in place.
Yeah, fire's burning, you can't really.
Yeah, I, I just don't know how you want, you cork the bottle again, now that the, the plan's been written, they have the plan, it's an independent body, how do they, how do we tell them, okay, stop, you can't? So, I don't, I don't know if we have any options.
And my, I've always been of the mind, so that it's a planning initiative, I think it needs to go to the planning board, and I think the planning board needs to make a decision as to what they wanna do with it. And you're right, the plan exists, it's there. We got, regardless of who pays for it. Who paid for it through a grant? Who paid the grant back? And it's money that came out of our budget.
And even if, even if it does fail, we have it, it's ours.
Right.
We, we own it.
Can I ask, and I know you haven't gotten the answer yet, but can I add this to this? Okay. We have a hundred and forty thousand dollars in for master plan update, Sue?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, it would seem to me, okay, and I'm speaking planning board issue, okay? As a member of the planning board, if I presented this plan to add to the master plan, okay, uh, it would seem to me that it might be more appropriate to just accept the plan as it is for right now. And since the master plan is going to be redone, to have that as a document or a, you know, a planning document for the master plan update to be considered at that point in time.
If the master plan update committee chooses to go that way, I mean, there'd be a committee set up to redo the master plan, and they'll, they'll have this at their disposal, if they so choose, they can incorporate it.
So, when they're coming up with the master plan portion for Pennardville, they would utilize this plan as?
As a part of the plan, the master plan.
As the ideas for?
If they choose to.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's a document that's there.
A resource for them.
Right, a resource that they could go through, they could adopt, say, hey, this plan is, let's take this, let's take sections out of this, there's portions to this that we, 'cause it's gonna be, be done. I mean, it just seems to me to add it to the master plan at this point, since it's gonna be, we're gonna have an update. I don't, to me, it just doesn't seem the way to do a plan. Now, the question though, reverse factor where you were, because if that's the direction that the planning board goes, have they fulfilled?
Yeah, that's right, I don't know. And that's, I think, the question that we need to get the answer for.
Right.
I'll email him tomorrow.
That's a burning question.
But I won't get a response, so you look for it tomorrow night.
Yeah. Probably not. And, I don't know, it's critical. Do you wanna follow up on, was your question answered?
Yes.
Oh, can I, can I just, on this, uh, I've gotten my, uh, my copy.
Yep.
Electronically, I didn't get a paper copy unless it's in there now, uh, but I started going through it. And in it, it's, and it's probably what you have there, uh, it talks about the beginning, no, it talks about the beginning, uh, talks about the notices that went out, how many notices, uh, the whole process, it shows, uh, the planning, you know, the planapalooza process, the brainstorming processes and everything. And I guess, my question is, when I read that, and I see the pictures of, you know, various people that were at, at these brainstorming sessions that they had, it seems to me that there was a lot of, I mean, I saw, I saw quite a few people.
Yeah, there was.
Okay? Um, and from reading that, I kind of, I kind of, as we go forward, and I, I haven't gotten to the meat of the plan yet, um, but I gather from that, that these things that came up were generated from this brainstorming session?
Things, what?
To a degree. For, for instance, each of the tables had a big map of the Pennardville area, and they asked questions like, what do you consider the center of Pennardville? You know, and people looked, and a lot of people said, oh, I think it's right here at the corner of College and Mast and Rochambeau. So, yes, those came out of that, those groups. But, the actual meat and potatoes of, we need to increase the density in that area and move the buildings closer, that all came out of the, the consultant down in Tennessee. So, so there was a little bit of both. Um, I don't think the individuals working at that facilitated meeting realized what the end result of, you know, their input was gonna be. They were asking basically, you know, what do you think about the traffic on Mast Road? What do you think about the Ice House District? Would that make a nice, you know, um, common area? Or, you know, where do you consider the recreational center of? You know, so they were kind of open-ended questions, but the real plan, the words in the plan came from the consultant.
Well, I, I understand the words in the plan, but I guess, getting to something like what's called Cody's Corner, okay? Uh, I mean, I understand the concept, all right? And was that something that was generated? I mean, changing, changing that gateway? Was that? that something-
I think what was identified was that it was the gateway, it was the entrance to Pinnardville.
The ad hoc committee, exactly. They, they came up with that and, and that's, that's, they wanna identify it. One of the ways of identifying it is, is naming it and, and drawing a separation between Manchester and, and Gofftown. And the, the gateway, that's how that, that came forth out of the committee.
For instance, the, during the facilitated discussion, it was identified by most groups that the Co, the Pinnard Street Mast Road intersection was the gateway into Pinnardville.
Okay.
But no one discussed driveways to Mast Road should be closed off and back access roads should be created, or-
None of that was discussed by us.
The building that comes at the, you know, that's yours, you're coming down Pinnard Street, the building you look at should reflect the character of Pinnardville. That all came from the consultant, that wasn't discussed at the-
Okay, well, in, in the, in that section, okay? Uh, because one of the members was Lieutenant Brown, okay? Uh, I think at the time it was Captain, I don't remember. Um, but, and who was there from fire? Was it?
I think Bill Connor was there.
Bill Connor was there, yeah.
Lieutenant Connor, okay? Um, but I, I see, I guess what I, my, my questions is, are, as far as, you know, life safety, um, access to the communities, okay, for fire, for emergency vehicles, as far as police, you know, being able to maneuver because Mast Road is such a congested area, other ways to get to neighborhood, you know, neighborhoods in there. Um, is that why some streets might have been recommended to be opened up?
I don't recall, at least at my group, I don't recall it being framed that way. It was more, how can we remove the local traffic off of Mast Road, um, so people could still get to 114 or still get to Manchester without having to get onto Mast Road? Um, how can you create roads in the back of the shopping center so if on a Sunday morning you wanna go to five stores, you don't have to come back onto Mast Road?
Right.
Okay.
But the, can I, can I bring us back? The, the issue we're trying to grapple with is, what, what is Mark and my role gonna be at tomorrow night's meeting?
Right.
And our role is basically, as I see it, is going to be to listen.
A listening session.
A listening session, and come back to this board with what we heard at the listening session. We're not there to make comment.
Right.
Present, present the board's, this board's position on the plan itself.
I think you're gonna be put in a spot there, you're gonna have to-
We are, I'll tell you what, this, this-
No question.
We are going to be put in the spot tomorrow night because I expect the question to be asked, how did this board feel or what was their decision on Monday night at the meeting? And my answer is going to be still under legal counsel advice, period. I mean, I didn't, I didn't get the answer that I was looking for. I don't think you guys got the answer. I mean, we're waiting to hear from HUD.
Well, that's true, yeah.
I mean, I, no comment. And, and I can answer every question they ask that way, no comment, and, and go from there.
Well, I, I don't think you have to say no comment. People watching know that you were gonna inquire from HUD, and you can tell them that.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
It's gonna be fiery.
Well, and along those lines, could I just clarify, at the last meeting, I don't think, and at least I didn't personally, and I don't think I heard here anyone disparaging the individuals that were coming to the public hearings, the residents. I don't think that it's an insignificant number of people. I think there's a big concern with the residents in Pinnardville over this whole process.
Was he talking about this board, though, or was it kind of being-
I'm not sure, and that's why I just wanna clarify. I mean, I, I know I spoke to, that I'd like to see people focus their comments and energies on the plan versus, you know, people's background. I think I touched upon, you know, the industrial court, that those individuals were on that committee because we put them there, and they naturally have backgrounds in, you know, development and, you know, they're volunteers, and we shouldn't be attacking the characters of the people on the committee. Talk about the plan and what you wanna change about the plan, but try not to bring in the personal effects. But, so I just wanted to clarify that, 'cause I, I don't remember anyone belittling the residents. I think they have a very valid concern.
I hear responding to Representative Burt's comment about disparaging comments and remarks and name-calling and that sort of thing. I don't recall any of that. I, in fact, went to great lengths to make sure that everybody who wanted to be heard had a chance to be heard multiple times.
I think he's talking about a different committee, 'cause he talked about tinfoil hats. I, I never heard that here.
Well, that was, oh, yes, that was said here, that was said here.
By who?
Not, not this committee. That was, that was, the, the tinfoil hat was said by a member of this community who sat in the back row, and she came forward, and she started out and, and like-
Oh, yes.
Two minutes into it, she said, let me put my tinfoil hat on. And then, I mean, after that, it was lost in space as far as I was concerned, but.
Oh, so, but no, member, this-
No, this committee, no, no, no. The, the, the tin hat was said out there.
Oh, okay.
I read, I wa, I wasn't here, but I read the minutes, okay? And of, you know, the selectmen's minutes. And I didn't get any picture or anything from the selectmen's minutes that anybody here made any type of a comment about somebody who was speaking negative about the program. But I have to say that sitting here tonight, I got the impression that, maybe I misunderstood it, but I got the impression that it came from this board while I wasn't here.
Correct. And, and I have heard that comment before, that Representative Burt was disappointed in the selectmen, in the comments that they've made against disparaging the, the residents.
And that-
So, I just wanted to be clear that I don't believe we did that.
This, this board never did that.
No.
Not, not at all. I mean, to this, as, as, as far along as this program has come, I mean, we still have not given our answer or our consensus to how we honestly feel about this program.
We did, and I, and I think I made it perfectly clear at the hearing that we wanted to hear their opinions, that we valued their opinions, that we're gonna take into consideration their opinions, and they had multiple opportunities to speak. Um, and I asked two or three or four times if people still wanted to speak, and nobody came forward. After all of that effort, we finally closed the public, and this is just a public comment period. This wasn't a public hearing. This is just a public comment period in our regular agenda.
It was busy.
So, I mean, I'm not sure where they got.
And I don't think anybody's been cut off.
No, not at all.
As a matter of fact, public comment went on for over forty-five minutes, I believe.
I mean, the only time I would bring people in is when they started repeating the same issues over and over again.
Or, or getting, making a, a personal text.
Exactly. Alright, so I think we've got enough guidance, which is gonna play out tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll make a call. One of the person that called me today, I'm not gonna beat this up.
Okay. That was all just on the plan.
Yeah.
Pinnardville committee update. How about the historic district? The committee report?
No, we're gonna be meeting this week.
Okay. Um, conservation?
Conservation met two weeks ago. Uh, we had a couple of, um, plans. We heard a, we had a special exception, recommendation for a special exception to build a single-family home on an existing non-conforming lot off of Danus Park Road, map six, lot thirty-six-one-one. This is a lot on the left-hand side of Danus Park. As you go down, it's kind of a flaglot that abuts the rail trail.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, the conservation commission needs to, needed to do a site walk, so they went and arranged with the, um, the developer to, um, to walk that, 'cause it's a very wet area. The only access into the, the lot is, is very wet.
How big is the lot?
Oh, it's a buildable lot.
How big?
Uh, off the top of my head, I don't, I don't recall. I'd be stretching.
No, you see, you see my point.
Yeah. Um, also, map five, lot fifty-six, fifty-six-one, fifty-six-five. Um, that was the parcel off of Tate Road Drive. And, um, the conservation commission did, we met, um, actually, two weeks ago on Monday and, and did a, a site walk, and there was an area, the conservation section was much wetter than, um, they had anticipated. So, they're going back for an additional site walk with, um, some of the members who have kind of an expertise in, um, the soil science and, in the wetlands area. Um, so there was no decision made on that. Also, map twenty-six, lot twenty-three, which is two seventy-three Mast Road, MB3 construction. It's the, uh, small little triangle lot just by Henry Bridge Road on the left-hand side. Um, it's gonna be a, uh, construction rental facility proposed. The conservation commission had no issues or concerns other than asking that, um, attention be made to, uh, potential fuels, hazardous materials used on the property.
Yeah, they won't be storing materials.
I, I mentioned that to them.
Yeah, they won't be, yeah.
Uh, map four, lot fifty, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, Bog Road, which is a residential one. Um, that is a, uh, lot line adjustment, and I think merging of some lots in the, uh, that was just a conceptual, so the conservation commission didn't, um, talk about that. They're gonna wait until the actual plan, um, comes before them. Uh, we'll talk about the Robert, the boundary line change here. Oh, actually, we did that today.
Right.
So, conservation commission had no, um, issues on that. And then finally, on Channel Lane, map nineteen, lot eighteen, there was a variance request. We, the conservation had to, um, recommend that. It was for a twelve-by-twelve deck, which is, uh, going close to the shoreline, and conservation had no issues with that as long as it didn't, um, approach the shoreline more than twenty from the, from the building.
Complies to the shoreline act, yeah.
Correct. And they already had their permits, um, for that. And then finally, uh, we had a meeting with the residents of Glen Lake. Um, Amy Smoguler could not attend, um, so they're gonna attempt to set up another meeting with her. But basically, uh, we did get the updated plan for Glen Lake, and Amy's recommendation is that next year, um, they do an herbicide treatment with follow-up diving. So, there was nothing in the Glen Lake plan for diving this year.
Right.
So, I believe conservation may be looking at releasing the remaining money from that special article to, um, the Nemaski Lake Association, because they've already done the herbicide treatment in the beginning of the year, and they've already done some diving, and I believe those funds will, um, expire this year, 'cause that was a special article two years ago.
Yeah, that special article's in one year. Their funds are in their budget this year. So, last year was a special article for one year.
This year they budgeted.
For two thousand. His plan was five years.
And was that spent?
That was spent last year for diving.
That was spent, okay, understood.
This year, this, the two thousand was placed in conservation commission budget. And Amy did, um, confirm she will be there at the September twenty-fourth meeting.
Excellent. We actually moved it, our next meeting's on a Tuesday night versus Wednesday, 'cause she's not available on Wednesdays. Um, and then they're looking to create either one large association by joining the Nemaski Lake or creating a, a, a new super association so that, um, but I, I have to say, a lot of the sentiment at that meeting, because there was a large number of residents of Glen Lake, were basically looking to the town and saying, you know, this is a town resource, there is the Glen Lake boat launch, the waterfront area. Um, the town should be stepping up and doing its part in cleaning up the mill foil. 'Cause as long as mill foil is coming, is there-
It'll go downstream to Nemaski.
It will go downstream, as well as the, the mill area. Um, there's the shallow water-
Right.
At the mill pond, and that's also feeding as well as Scobee Pond and all of those other headwaters.
Our state grants looking-
Boats and trailers from other states and other parts of the country.
You know, the different lakes I've been to kayaking, they have a monitor there, someone at the launch area, what, asking you, you know, what lake have you been on and-
And I think that's the role that the association can play.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, by getting volunteers to, to sign up and-
Yeah, volunteer light monitors. It's Southern Hampshire Lake Association, yeah.
But I know there was some talk at conservation to, um, either increase or add to the budget line some mill foil control, or additional mill foil control.
Yeah, we didn't add it to their budget, because if they're gonna go beyond diving, that you may wanna make that a special article. And I think they need to explore what grants are available, same as Nemaski did that year, when they got twenty-three thousand from the town. They also got a state grant, and, um, residents themselves put in some money, and I think, I forget who else. They reached out and they got another contributor.
State grants, uh, the applications were due in the beginning of September, just that you were looking to get a grant.
Yeah.
And then I believe they, once they accept that, you have until October to get the estimates, and then they actually do the awards. The state only has a certain amount of money, and then they try to divide it up among all the-
Like everything else, there's more demand for the money and the, and the amount that's, that is depleting. That's not increasing.
It's too bad, 'cause that is a regional issue.
Yeah.
Which needs to be addressed regionally. Maybe that's something Southern Hampshire Planning Commission can be working on, too.
Yeah, and then they said there was a spot over there right around Main Street?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's another spot.
Yeah.
Every time you get the heavy rains, like we just had last week, the increased flow breaks off the mill foil, brings it downstream, spreads it around.
Eventually, they'll take, bite the bullet, put a, put a major hit on it with some herbicide, some kind of try and exterminate it, but not that's possible.
Yeah, Nemaski did that this year.
And there is discussion with the pumping number regarding about not allowing trolling motors anymore because they're chopping up the mill foil and sending it down, down river. Okay, you know what's that?
That was it.
Have a battle.
Yeah. Next year.
We'll find some, we'll find some big goldfish that'll eat that mill foil. Don't, don't get those, what are those, those Chinese ones, that John Boy?
McCoy.
Probably car for that.
How about, uh, CIP?
No meeting.
I'm talking about last week.
I sat in for you, remember?
That was the week before.
Yeah, this is a two-week report.
Yeah.
They're gonna have a meeting this year.
Okay, I'm in it.
We went through all of the, uh, lines. Um, we started with administration. The new server that's coming, or supposedly coming, uh, they wanna update so we can work on this, have better, uh, connectivity with the servers and, and work, work better, more efficient.
Is that server virtualization for police?
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, that was, that was changed from a one to a two. Um, the, uh, money for software, for the software program, I guess it shows that it's in there, it should be taken out or removed. I, I believe it was already paid for, or is it, is it being paid for? For the new, for the new, the new, um-
The finance software?
Finance software.
Yeah, that's, it was a special article.
Yeah.
That's this year?
Yeah, okay. I guess it shows, it showed up in next year's, on next year's line as well or something. There's, there was a comment made that it should be taken out.
It's just an error on the script.
Okay. Um, moving down to Town Hall, they pushed the siding off a year. Siding will not start, it's gonna be pushed off. If it was two thousand fifteen, it'll be sixteen.
Grassmere Town Hall?
Grassmere Town Hall.
Oh, yeah, we put it in again for the, to maintain the siding on the side.
Yep. It was pushed off a year. CIP committee pushed it off a year. Um, back to Town Hall as well, skipping around as we, as we kinda went down the lines. Um, the lift and the repairs of the, of the building, we had kinda like one price set for it. They opted to go with forty thousand for the lift this year and repairs in fifteen. They divided up the, divided up the cash. So, the, the lift will be done first for forty thousand dollars, and then the rest, hundred and twenty-plus thousand dollars remaining will be done, used for the upstairs, repair of the upstairs to re, rehab the upstairs. Um, library was okay.
Can you repeat that again, Mark? The second half for Sue?
The, um-
The configuration of the-
The lift.
Town hall space.
Town, yeah, the Town Hall space.
Forty thousand for ADA lift was approved, but the, uh, revenue collection office was not. That was pushed out a year.
Pushed out a year, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I go down to Town Hall.
Yeah.
I also have the IT server virtualization for PD was approved for seventy-five thousand next year.
I, I didn't have that on here, but, okay, I, yeah. Um, the-
And a, uh, master plan was approved for next year, at a hundred and forty.
Yeah. The, um, Police Department, HVA system, HVAC system, um, the, um, the chief basically had asked for three of them to be replaced, and they did okay to replace them in two thousand fourteen because of the number of issues they've had, the number of breakdowns they've had. Um, we've had axle belt, burning belts in one or two of them. We've had several issues with them, and they, basically, they, they, I think, they put them in two thousand fourteen budget anyways. Um, Fire Department, this is the plan, the Fire Department that, that the chief, uh, presented. Um, he's looking at approximately four point five million dollars to do all three stations at once, um, on a, uh, separate line for bond payments. Um, SCBA in two thousand fifteen, um, SCBA for the fire service, their life expectancy has, um, pretty much come full circle, and they're going to be needing, uh, to be replaced.
How many?
All of them. Um-
Eighty?
Forty-five, maybe fifty or so, Phil, forty. Each, each piece of apparatus has, um, a certain number, four to six or four to seven.
Right, that's what I-
Yeah, depending. Um, the thing, the thing that, I, I mean, I can get- The thing, the thing that, I mean, I can get you a number in a minute here. The thing that he's working on is he's working on a grant with New Boston, Ware, Dunbarton, Bedford, Litchfield. They're doing, they're trying to get a grant together so that they can all get in it and buy in mass quantity to try to save significant numbers on the, on the purchase of that. Parks and Rec, you heard tonight, basically, the only thing he wants to put on his list, his wish list is two thousand fifteen or sixteen is for a signboard so that they'll have some way of letting people know what's going on in town.
Mean a message board.
Message board, yeah, yeah, signboard, message board.
Maybe like a community board, that'd be kind of nice, so just, yeah, not just for him, but also all can use it, more or less.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that was it. The plan's here, if you guys want to look at it. The plans are pretty much broken down, station by station, to the dollar amounts. It's the Ricci, R-I-C-C-I, Ricci? The same company that did Manchester's engine for. He did, he did the bids and everything. He has the proposals, all the drawings, everything is here. I'll give that to you guys, you guys can look at it. Pretty much in for that.
Thank you. About EDC.
Hi, EDC. We finally got to some talk on the Pondview Park, on the back road, to try and rezone it so they can get to use it more, put in some kind of a flex zone. And then we're going to try and put something together and get it to the party's concerns and try and get this to get onto a voting ballot so they can change that zone down there. It's, you know, not usable land, it's usable land, but it's not usable in the fact that it's, the trucking ability is what's killing everybody down there. So you're going to try and get, put it into some of the zone where they could build other buildings, maybe some, a bank, or maybe a couple of small restaurants, or something that will be feasibly usable rather than being, they're kind of in a, Manchester's got them in a lock mode. They can't, you know, you really can't do anything there if you can't supply trucks to it. So they're going to have to rezone it to do something different. And the owners apparently had, had been talked to, and they were all in favor of having changed, so I think that's going to try and go. There was some talk about the town trying to simplify the regulations for new businesses to come in town to get started up and try and reduce the, all the hoops you got to jump through. And if a guy's going to go out and spend a lot of money on a piece of land and set himself up to try and do something here, and he's going to spend three or four hundred thousand on a piece of land, and then for a couple of years, he's going to go through all the motions and get to the end of it and find out that, okay, we're not going to let you do that, or we're going to let you do it, but this is how it's going to go. And some people are just going to walk away, and that's the issue I've seen. People don't want to come because they can't get into a true temper, you know? And the other thing was, they want us to be able to maybe appoint somebody, whether it be Derek or somebody else in the office here, as a point of contact. When somebody calls, I'm out of town, they can actually get to somebody to talk to and get right down to the nitty-gritty, hey, look, would I be able to do this? Would I be able to do that? How much trouble is it going to be for this type of business or whichever? And then they don't have to, they can get a quicker answer and get a better handle on what's going to happen so you can get these people to know what's going on, bring them in the door quicker, maybe. And that was, that was a lot of, there was a lot of talk about that. Trying to just focus for new business in town, try to get some people in here. But they had to relieve, just give some relief to these guys, but get them to want to come here, first off.
What kind of relief?
Well, just not so many regulations. I mean, we've got regulations to death, and that's, that's a big problem we've got. I know we need regs, don't get me wrong, but.
But I can tell you from personal experience, a lot of that is blown out of proportion because I see development all over the state.
And that's maybe why we have to get.
Wait a minute. To suggest that Goffstown's regs are more onerous than other communities is just a mischaracterization. I mean, they may think that the regs are too much, but that's just people saying any regulation is too much regulation, so, and you know, put it in perspective. Put it in perspective, I see it statewide.
Right.
In fact, isn't there a project that we're going to be participating in? They're going to survey all the various. Yes, so that we can make sure that our process is streamlined because I think that's, Alan, where you're going, is we want to streamline the process.
Right.
Can't necessarily get rid of the rules and regulations, but you make it streamlined so it's, it's quick, it's efficient, and people can get what they need to get done.
One or two people instead of dealing with five or six different divisions in the offices. Just get me to somebody who can tell me what's going on.
That's one of the recommendations that came from Dread.
Right. That's what they're looking at more than anything, so.
Yeah, now, I'm glad you brought that up because a while back, we had that committee. Remember, the Business Committee?
Business Occupancy Committee, they're still meeting.
Okay, but is that what Alan is talking about as far as being an obstacle?
I don't think that's what they were going, they're really trying to get to get, when you call to the office here, they want to be able to get some point of contact. Somebody you can get to like right off the bat, not have to go through.
That's what that committee was supposed to do, that committee.
That committee does do that.
Well, they didn't feel as though that was going on because they felt if you called this office here, you couldn't get to who you needed to get to. You didn't know for sure where you wanted to go. They wanted to be advertised, if you want to call and find anything out about where you want to be in business or work your business here, they wanted one number to be able to call and say, okay, that's where I need to go, direct line. Instead of calling the Town Hall and going through maybe the Building Department or back to Planning or over here or.
Well, the Business Occupancy Committee has representation from Planning, Building, Police.
Right, but they have nobody to go straight to to talk to, apparently, if you call here. Who do you get to talk to?
Well, if it's new business, they would talk to Derek because he's Economic Development. He's a point of contact.
Okay, but again, that's what they're looking for us to do, is to say, okay, look.
He answer all those questions?
Yes, he'll probably tell them if it's.
Right, that's.
That we'll schedule you with the Business Occupancy Committee, and that, that way you'll have representatives from all the departments.
Well, that's what they're basically looking for, is get somebody that will, you know, when somebody calls and they want to be able to go to a straight line, right into the main line and get to where you want to be and say, okay, that's who we need to talk to? Great.
Derek, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, and then he can put them on to everything else he needs to be in.
And then he helps schedule the Business Occupancy.
So they were looking at us to say, do you want to have Derek do that? Do you want somebody else to maybe do that as part of his?
He's the main point, he's the main point of contact, and he facilitates all of the other interactions.
Wasn't Derek there at that meeting?
Uh, yes, he was, but, you know, we couldn't really throw him under the bus right then and there on the spot.
Why would you be throwing him under the bus?
Well, we weren't really, but he would accept that job, he said, as part of his duties. It's just that nobody has actually said that's where you're going to go to when you're going to call, and nobody's really put anybody in that position that this is where you're going to call, that's who you're going to talk to.
Yeah, I thought we had laid that out.
Sure, and when Dread was there, we said we did have a point of contact with Derek.
Well, what I don't understand is Derek's the one that's there as Economic Development Coordinator at your Economic Development Committee.
I see this quite a bit, too, a lot of this is anecdotal. We said, I said, well, give me an example of a business who tried to come here and didn't get through it. You know, nobody can ever give you one. X, Y, Z Corporation who tried to come to Goffstown, but didn't, because, give me an example of somebody, you know?
Well, there was one at Pondview that wanted to set up the self-storage units, remember? That goes, went way back.
Yeah, and that was an issue with, you know, fire sprinklers and, you know, one person saying it was the Fire Department's fault, and somebody else saying it was this.
Well, they went somewhere where they didn't have to have sprinklers.
That's what they wanted, yeah.
Now, that's it, they ended up going to a town where they didn't have to have sprinklers.
But they didn't want it right there.
Okay, what else does?
That was pretty much the end of the meeting. The biggest part was to talk about that, getting that, trying to get something to happen there. So, there you go.
Okay. Any other older new business, it's ten o'clock, so.
Just real quick, one of the things Dread talked about was our website. They had some really good examples of websites. Could we make use of the high school? You know, most, high school students, young students, they're whizzes at websites. Maybe there's some graphic arts students we can reach out to and see if anybody wanted to take something like that on as a project or a couple of them, or contests to see who could come up with a.
We redid our whole website. Where are we going? We hired someone and they redid our whole website with that grant.
Yeah, we only wanted, we only wanted to change a few things. We wanted to put the maps on them, we wanted to take those.
When you looked at what he put here, those pictures, and you look at our website, our website is functional, it is very functional.
No, 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 I agree with you, that's why I brought that up, but I don't see why, have Neil and Brian have Sue talk to them about it and see if they have the time to be able to do it.
I just didn't want to volunteer them for more work. I mean, there's so many things going on right now.
Right, we have, we're implementing two huge pieces of software, IMC and the finance software. IT is straight out, but little things that we could do is, you know, headshots of the elected board members so they see who they're going to be talking to.
Well, and the other thing, too, was the maps and a couple of those things that were on.
Maps are up there.
It was also the graphical layout.
Yeah.
The eye, the eye appeal.
Yeah.
Right, you know, wow, this is really cool.
First, first approach.
Well. So that, I was just throwing. Have Sue have that discussion at your next department head meeting or something?
Yeah, I don't, but like I said, if you're going to rely on IT, they're outstriking this year.
No, but I mean.
No, I think he had a good idea, maybe some of the high school could set.
We hired a graphic artist to do that, remember, we got grants and we got.
Right, I'm not suggesting we pay anybody, I'm saying maybe even a contest or something where we solicit some of the.
The homepage, I mean, are you talking about just, right now, every page is kind of set up basically the same. And up above, we seasonally change the photos up in the header.
I think a high school student could probably put a website together and.
That's what I mean, yeah, it's not a bad idea.
Probably two weeks. And just graphically, it may, and, you know, and that's what I'm saying, maybe a graphic art student.
It doesn't change our functionality because we've gotten praises of how functional our website is.
That's the reason why I asked if Sue.
Our maps are up there.
That's why I say I think it's more statics. I mean, occasionally I'll go on to some of these tiny, these little dinky towns I never even heard of, and it's like, what a really cool website. I mean, it's just got photos and, you know, things are, it's just, so combine that with the functionality, I think that's what Dread was getting at.
Yeah.
Because it gives you. Is everything current on our homepage? Does notices there that are old or, I notice there are some.
We leave notices up there. They're in, kind of like in the background because people will call and say, hey, I never saw a notice, and, oh, it's on the website, it's still there. You want to look.
But you just look, some of them are like May.
Yeah.
You know, and so when that's the first thing you see, it kind of looks like no one's.
Well, the most current ones you have first when you see it, and then you should scroll down.
I would hope so. Trying to keep websites up to date is a nightmare.
Yeah.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah, and we don't have a webmaster, so the secretaries keep the minutes and the agendas and the calendars and the notices up to date to make sure those are up. But you're right, the old ones don't disappear. If you want them to disappear, we can have them disappear, and when the public hearing's over or whatever, they go away, but.
Yeah, you need to leave it off a certain amount of time because then people, like you said, people say, well, I never, well, it's been up there, and if you wipe it out, they say, well, it's not up there. How do I know that it was up there?
We keep all old election information up there, and it's useful. People say, hey, I, a couple of years ago, this article passed, when was it? And they can look it up.
Nemaski Lake Mill Foil Treatment, June fourteenth. The Lyme Disease, Tick Borne Diseases, June sixth. May thirty-first, PSNH Public Notice to the Town of Goffstown. I mean, some of those.
Well, the one, you want to keep up, right, through tick season and mosquito season.
Public Meeting of the I-293 Eggs at Six and Seven, June eleventh.
These are under public notices or?
It's right on, public notices on the main way, you know, and that's posted May twenty-eighth. The meetings come and gone and.
So how long do you want to leave them up? I mean, that's a policy decision. How long do you want them up? Some of them, like I said, anything on Triple E and West Nile and ticks is for wholesale.
But I would say a public notice for a meeting, and once the meeting's gone, why would we have the public notice still up there?
Well, when's our next quarter, a new meeting with the EDC? Maybe we need to bring this up, maybe this should be an agenda topic, if not the agenda topic, as to how do we recreate our town image?
I think a slogan would be nice, if someone would come up with a slogan.
Yeah, an entrance sign, other than like the guy.
Oh, boy.
Other than, oh, boy. Other than like the Dread guy from Dread said, a green sign that says Goffstown.
Yeah, and I think you need a slogan, maybe a slogan contest for high school students, too, would be good.
Yeah.
One last question. Who's up next for budget next week?
Oh, I don't have that committed memory.
Will we get their presentation soon? We had asked like a week before.
That must be another meeting I missed.
No.
Presentation one week before?
Yeah, we know what that one we're going to have.
Several times.
Oh.
Just don't know.
So, I mean, it's very difficult to come up with questions when you're seeing the stuff for the first time.
Well, you have all the budget numbers for everyone.
No, it's the, their actual presentation because they give the increases, the reasons.
Typically, those have always been handed out at a budget, at a presentation.
Right, and that's why I'd ask this year if we could have it beforehand.
A week early, okay. I don't recall.
Anything else?
No, I have something. No.
Town reports.
No, 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 non-public. Non-public, it's.
There's a couple of things.
Which one?
Non-public affecting the reputation of a person not a member of the board.
Okay.